The Alabama State Board of Education Work Session is now called to order. Dr. Matthews?
Well, thank you, Dr. Richardson. We just have these fine young people here, and I know we always like to take advantage of young people and see what they've got to say. You know, they did not get to introduce themselves, so what if I start down here on the end and y'all just tell us who you are, where you go to school? So I know we've got two schools, and what grade you're in. I'm gonna give you a list of that. I don't know, do you actually think we need to know about you, sir?
Okay. I'm Isabella. I go by Bella. Darjeet. I go to Columbia High School, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Ayanna Starlin. I'm in 10th grade. I go to Columbia.
Oh, so Baro Daniel, I go by Suri. I go Columbia High School. I'm a sophomore.
My name's Lena Whitstone. I'm a sophomore at Columbia High School, and I am our FTA Club Secretary.
My name's Majestic Wes. I go Columbia. I'm 12th grade, and I'm president.
That's right. So y'all are all sophomores?
Yeah.
Okay.
My name's Terry Davis. I'm in 10th grade, and I go to Columbia.
My name is Ronald. I'm in 12th grade. I go to Columbia High School.
My name is Tiffany. I am in the 12th grade, and I go to Columbia High School.
My name is Ellen Harris, and I'm in the 12th grade. I go to Huntsville High.
My name is Taylor Pigs. I'm in the 12th grade. I go to Huntsville High, and I'm our club president.
My name's Ellie Ball Street. I'm in the 10th grade. I go to Huntsville High School, and I'm an upcoming FTA State Officer.
Alex May. My name is Katranette Sims. I am 20-plus years removed from high school. I have an honor of teaching. The three young ladies here were housed at Huntsville High School, Huntsville High School, not hospital. And I have an opportunity to service all of the high schools in Huntsville City Schools in the district.
My name is Elizabeth Goodson, and I teach Spanish. We're an Ivy school, so I teach Spanish 2, 3, and 4, and I have the opportunity to work with these amazing young students during, whenever we can, during enrichment or whatever.
So let me start. We have four seniors, I think. Taylor, if we start with you and we go backwards, follow the seniors, we'll tell us what you're planning on doing after a couple of weeks.
Okay. Well, I'm Taylor. I plan on attending the University of Alabama at Birmingham, majoring in music education and minoring in business admin. My goal is to be a dean of music, so that's where I'm climbing up to be right now. So that's good.
I am planning to go to the University of North Alabama and major in elementary education with hopes after to get my master's degree in reading comprehension, and then hopefully be someone on the administrative staff of the school after I teach.
I plan on going to University of North Alabama for early childhood education.
Very good. Where do you teach yourself?
I'm different there, my girls. I want to stay for me in college, and I'm majoring in nursing and clinical surgery.
Good. Can't beat that.
Very nice.
Any other questions? Well, thank y'all for coming. I hope you have... The sponsors told me they tried to stop at least one group. They tried to stop, I guess, all of you together on the way down, and they couldn't find a place to eat, and places were closed and all, so let's all wish them they'd find a good place for money.
It's in my district, but it's right out the interstate beach park area. Have y'all stopped before?
I'm probably talking this, though.
Okay, well, you know, town passes. They have their offices.
And from Huntsville area, I can tell you, I hope I-65 is open. For all of us.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
You did a great job. You did a great job. Don't miss any of it. You took good work.
Anybody else? We're going to get quite a few. I'm saying, and he said it was like, oh, it's early this morning.
We didn't find these presentations. Now, there's some down here in here that have some of these other things, but...
Okay. No more superintendent updates or number two board questions. Only for us.
Like new questions or old?
Just board questions. All the new questions.
Some of those were mentioned. The questions have come to me, and I'm passing them on, and I will have to commend your staff. They've been great, in fact, helping me with links to things, questions that have been... When I reach three questions or more, and I have some difficulty finding the information or making it easier, trying to make it easier for them, I just want to thank the staff, first of all, for being ready to send me an email with that link, because it does mean a lot to my constituents, and it certainly does to me. One question I keep having calls about, primarily calls, emails, is the CRT with quotation marks, because we don't have CRT. And so they provided the link to our new policy in the administrative code, which is helpful. But I keep getting questions like, what does this cover? What happens if they don't comply? How do they, at the local level? And this is coming from different avenues, and I think probably a lot of what's being discussed publicly is in campaigns and such forth is probably part of that. But apparently, parents, a lot of these are parents and some are teachers. So if we could have some feedback on what that means, just your basic questions on how does that impact the schools? What qualifies because we, they'll call and they'll say, well, this program, I can't define, especially when I don't have the materials, but how do you define a program that's in violation of the policy that was added to the administrative code, since it's not using CRT? But that would be really helpful, I think, to all of us in case we, I don't think I'm the only one who gets those calls or questions. Probably those who are campaigning get it more than I do, but it's just one of those issues that's out there. And then the other one has to do, of course, with the FAFSA, and I know that you asked about the link, trying to make sure, that's another one. Had a lot of questions about FAFSA. Apparently, and I didn't want to bring this up during our discussion and break it up or anything, but I would like to have that information about the results. And I know that that's something you have to wait for, obviously, and we'll just follow that. But the other is, again, the question about whether it's mandatory. I always talk about the waiver. If we had a link to a copy of a waiver request, because apparently in different districts, and I'm happy to hear about the fact that a lot of local superintendents are going to grant an overall waiver for those parents, because not everyone is interested in even applying, but it does provide more information, because some are saying that it's required, and maybe because they're looking at numbers versus the fact that people just really don't want to fill it out. But if we can get that information and make it more easily accessible, not only to us, but also to our constituents when they start calling. And obviously, the timing is because it's close to graduation, and somewhere was told that they couldn't graduate unless they filled it out, and they weren't interested. So those kinds of things, you know, we need to dispel that, or at least not dispel it, but provide accurate information. That's pretty much...
We're getting still, we're getting much fewer questions on that, but thank you for doing that, and thanks for sending people to us. We had two questions, I think, but when you think 55,000 seniors too, that where somebody at the school misunderstood, I don't want to blame a counselor or a principal, or somebody said, there is no waiver, but of course, as soon as it came to us, we're, yes, there is a waiver, and here it is, and cleared those up pretty quickly. But we, again, get maybe one call a week from... The calls we're getting now are different. We were getting calls from school administrators and then some parents. The calls we're getting now are actually from people who are neither school officials or parents, but they just heard something about it, and so they want to know, is this a requirement? So then we explain it to them. So they don't, so there's obviously a gap there, because they're not getting direct contact from their school. But yeah, send any of those to us, and we'd be glad to send you the link, as I said before. We will get some more data, so I'm getting monthly reports on the FAFSA completion. As you know, the Alabama College attainment network is kind of, is a private organization, but that's their whole goal, is to get people to apply for college. They don't have to go to four-year college, but two-year or four-year college, based in Birmingham. And met with them a couple of weeks ago. Since we are, as was pointed out, now in the top 20, number 19 in the country, they have a big press conference scheduled next, I think it's Wednesday? Wednesday? Next Wednesday, 10 o'clock, at the Birmingham City School Board. Any of you who are certainly welcome to attend, we can get you the information on that. 10 o'clock, Wednesday, the Birmingham City School Board. I think it's going to be outside, in front of the school board, maybe in Lake Park, but in that area, they're working on the details. And then there is a College attainment network annual, they have an annual conference, and it's June 1st. It's going to be a virtual conference this year. They're hoping, I hope they'll be back in person next year, but anyway, it's easier at June 1st, try to get attendance for that, and we can send you that link too, if you want to register and join the conference. So they're doing a lot of things, and some of these, obviously, they're trying to gather the data as quickly as possible, so they can have the data for those meetings. But even the May report was much better than the April report. I'm going to also send you a link to a map, because we all like heat maps. And it's just a map that shows the counties that were basically have turned from red to green from last year to this year, and some have gone from light green to darker green, showing the participation rates. Just remember that they can, you know, those are the ones who've completed it. So there are two levels to FAFSA, and this is a discussion we have ongoing right now. So there is a, we have a lot of school counselors and career coaches who are doing a marvelous job in the schools, and we're going to bring one of our, one of our best career coaches in too for one of our highlights soon. But they can do part of it at school, so the students can go in and open a file, and they can enter a lot of the information. As everybody knows, and a part that's been controversial is the, the parents then have to enter tax information for it to be considered 100% complete. But students, if parents don't want to enter their information, students can't be held responsible for that. So we've been having a lot of discussions. We definitely want to make sure those students get a waiver. Nobody wants a student to not complete high school. That's never been the intention. It's really already fulfilled its intention by drawing attention to the money left on the table. But if students do their part, and the parents don't follow through and enter their tax information, the student will graduate. Please make sure everybody understands that. We are not looking for students to not graduate, obviously. But there's been some questions about that, so I give personal testimony, even, you know, I have a senior, and I've gone through this, now multiple times, doing FAFSA. It is easier, but it's not as easy as I'd hoped it would be, because at one point, when I was doing it, back last fall, you may, y'all may have heard, there were several days where the IRS website was down, and you could not do the automatic upload. So you had to go in and hand key your tax return, or you could wait till it went back. So anyway, I completed the process, but failed to hit the submit button. And so I thought I was complete, but there was another page where I had to, like, sign assurances or something, I don't know what it was. But anyway, got a, fortunately, our system, the system works pretty good, because I got an email that said, you've not completed the process. And I thought, well, I thought I had. So I went back in and checked and realized it was one box I had not checked. So the system does, it does catch those, but at the same time, we have parents who don't want to go back and complete, and that's fine too. All we need is either for them to do the waiver, or the superintendent to do the blanket waiver at the end. We've not heard any, like, there's going to be any place where there's a superintendent that refuses to do the waiver, and so students are going to be left hanging. I would be shocked if that were the case. We've not heard that anywhere, so we think that that's going to go well. We'll get another report at the end of June. Even though school will be out, they can continue to fill it out throughout the summer. And so what we will get is some of these, just in talking with Jim Purcell, and y'all know, we work with ACH on this, because under the way that the law's set up, they're the ones that actually keep all the FAFSA data, because they're the higher ed department. So he sends me regular reports, and the information I reported off came from him. But we'll get him to pull some things together and show you the final outcomes. But even through the summer, people will complete. So they started the process, and then they thought they didn't want to go to school, and then they decided they do want to go to school, and so they'll go in and finish. So the numbers will continue to grow throughout the summer, but we have already, we've already hit, like, we, you know, hit what ACH had said is kind of an internal goal, where we wanted to be, and we feel really good about that. So, but I will pull all that back for you and get you some, maybe even next month, kind of what the end of school year looked like. Yes, ma'am?
We touched on something that I think we need to just reiterate for those parents that are concerned about privacy, is that, just confirm for me, the State Department of Education is not keeping any information, housing any records, when our parents and students choose to fill out the documentation, as I did with my three girls, but that was our choice. The State Department is not seeing that information, correct?
So, yes, ma'am, we see none of their, like, tax information, their personal information.
And we don't hold any information?
We do not hold any information. We don't see any information. We do have, obviously, since it's a graduation requirement, there is a portal, which we sent this out in the Midweek Matters this week, which I realized was just yesterday, but in the power school student information system, the school counselor or designee or registrar or someone has to go in and check whether the student completed the FAFSA or did the waiver or got the, you know, what, which one of the three they had, so that their student transcript is complete. But we don't know any of the information inside of it. All we know is whether they chose the waiver or the FAFSA.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. I just, I wanted to, I saw that it was now a power school, but I just wanted to reiterate that we're not, we're not holding any information at the State Department.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Matthews, Roosevelt City is in my district, and they have high numbers of English learners, and so Superintendent Grimes is probably going to have to sign off on a long list, because many of these parents don't speak English, they don't have social security numbers, they don't follow the federal tax, so that's going to be difficult.
Yes, ma'am. And they, and he will just have to waive all of those, because they can graduate, they cannot receive federal aid if they're not citizens. Now, in some cases, as you know, they, the students may be citizens, but their parents are not, and the parents, so they really do, I mean, in that case, you know, we'd love for them to fill it out, because they do qualify for money, but many of those parents don't want to fill it out, and that's, again, certainly their prerogative, but they cannot be, you know, the student, there's no, like, legal problem for the student if they fill it out if their parents are not citizens. Nevertheless, they don't have, if they don't have a tax ID number and those kind of things, then we know somebody probably not going to, and he'll have to waive it.
Amazingly, I know of students who work so hard that they are saving their own money, unearned money, to go to college.
It's really, it's, of course, it's the first year, everything takes, you know, it was a little more difficult when we implemented, but it really has gone much more smoothly than we thought it might. We did, we, I shouldn't say we, I speak to us all collectively. ACH spent some money, they got a grant out of the CARES Act to purchase a program to manage the FAFSA completion, because, again, when somebody completes, it goes, the US Department of Education sends a this person completed to ACH, not to us, but to ACH. They've always done that. That, this, what the board did had nothing to do with that, but they needed an updated system that they could get more timely reports, and so they were able to get a federal grant to do that, and that's why we've been able to get such good reports and the map. I'll send you the heat map and get those kind of things in. So it's been a very good partnership with ACH and with the Alabama College attainment network, too.
Has ACH done in the past a follow-up that is what I was referring to before, where you have a follow-up to the amount of money for the completion and/or the completion? Because if it's a two-year college, obviously, we don't track students to the point where we have a lot of tracking information, but there has to be some way, if they have that information in the system with ACH.
Yeah, I'll get them.
Because that's what, you know, I know the schools can get that independently, and it's voluntary. I wouldn't force it on anyone to report back to the school, but it would be, I think, important to know, is this really working? It's one thing to fill out a form and get it all back. It's like with a lot of the AP courses that are, that students are taking, the real test is ultimately, do they make a three to a five on it, so that they get credit for it, and it means something. It means something anyway. I'm sure they've learned, but the bottom line is, that's why you do it, college credit and so forth. Plus, it helps in getting scholarships, academic scholarships. But all of that is to say, if there's a follow-up, and we're just getting them to fill out a form that they could have done anyway, by choice, the encouragement would be to follow through and to complete, and if it's, some of that money could be loan money, and they'd have to pay it back, but that would be an obligation that they would undertake. And I assume that when they fill that form out, they let them know that you're signing your name to something that you would ultimately need to pay back. That's, that's the kind of information I'd like to have. Putting a lot of students in debt, no, I'm sorry.
That's always been an issue when I taught on the two-year college level. I taught many developmental classes. I'd start out with English 101 with 30 students, and when the pals came in, I'd have 15. So that's always an issue, is, and kids would do that over and over again, and had they just stayed and completed the courses, they would have had a degree, they could have made a living the rest of their lives with that degree. So there is an issue there. Now, I think they've reduced the number of semesters. We call it the pill game. My child is playing a pill game, but I think they've reduced the number of semesters they can play that game. And I don't know how you fix that, how you, how you get them to understand, look, this will get you a little bit of money for a short period of time, but if you're, and you're smart, if you actually complete these courses, and you become a welder, a nurse, an automotive technologist, a teacher, this is, yeah, who you're proud of, but yeah, we'll look at you, we'll get you first two years, then you can support yourself for the rest of your life. How do we do that? I tried.
And many succeeded.
Yes.
Not many at all, they didn't all drop out, but we know that's an issue, and we'll work with ACH and get you student numbers and that. Well, we've got a lot of higher ed people here today. Now, they have a lot of higher ed people. They may be able to say more about it, but, and we'll, and they also know, are able to follow who goes to two-year schools versus four-year schools. ACH has a good, because when people sew up to four-year school, they can match them back to where they went to high school. So you know, we, we'll, they do an annual report that shows where people who graduate from our schools end up in higher ed, how many of them go, how successful they are, and if they go out of state, of course, they don't, they don't have your track.
That's a good way.
They can have some private school data, because some of the private schools participate. They don't have to.
Dr. Matthews, I know the issue was raised about the concept of CRT and our responsiveness to it, and I don't know if it's the best way to do it, it's the only way I've known to do it, as a school administrator and as a member of this board, but if anybody has raised concerns about the concept of CRT, I've asked them to be very specific in their complaints. I've actually sent out the resolution this board adopted, which did not mention the CRT, but dealt with the concept of equality. And then when I've gotten, then I've asked for some specifics, if you have a concern. Some are rumors and some are specific. And when I've gotten those specific information, I've communicated with the superintendent and our general counsel, Mr. Swan, and he has followed up on those things, because it's my interpretation, if you're in violation of the administrative code, it becomes an issue that we can rely on Mr. Swan to assist us with, and I believe he's been very effective and thorough in dealing with those, and I think I've explained that to you on a couple of instances where people have sent the information. I try to restrict it to only those in my district, but I have seen information from others, and some don't really know what we passed, so I send them the actual resolution.
Well, I've actually, Jason has sent the link to it, to the administrative code, and I think that's really helpful, because, but on the other hand, on the other hand, it's, if we had a sheet that said, it is not this, but it is this, I know you, from a legal standpoint, you kind of get yourself in, so you have to be really careful about that, but just generally, you try to provide that information, and the locals are having, I think, difficulty trying to define, especially in the area of teacher training, because that seems to be where a lot of the complaints originate. I know you know, because you perceive them, and most of them, I'm able to work through so that you don't, you could spend all day on that one issue, I know, based on my own telephone call. So anyway, that, if there's any way to address that, where we could have something, and then that would be a first step, I don't know how you would do that, but since, you know, I leave it to the great legal minds and those who deal with it on that standpoint.
I'll tell you, it's an interesting aside. We had a, you know, I like to tell personal stories, so while we were in the board meeting, I don't know about y'all, I get no cell phone service in here, but I pulled it up, because while we were in the board meeting, I got a message that I checked, I checked my messages between the board meeting and here, and I have a message from my senior son, a screenshot that he's trying to get his cap and gown tomorrow. We filled out our FAFSA, right? Question mark. So at lunch, I will send him a yes.
Yes, now.
Well, I have two questions, but I want to add to the comments about CRT. I think we need to clearly define what CRT is. I think a lot of the confusion is because people actually don't know what it is, and as you proceed with the request, I think that needs to be included, and the information that's provided, and I think it will minimize, maybe even eliminate, some of the challenges that we're facing.
That's what I'm trying to say, but go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's it.
Well, I have, go ahead. Comment.
There are, you want to go, go ahead.
I was just going to add to that. I think it would be helpful for superintendents and their local boards to know once defined if those types of materials are in their professional development that they're adopting, because I think that we have to be very clear about what's acceptable and what's not in terms of professional development. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting that I've seen anything, but I am suggesting that that seems to have been a problem in other states, and we need to be very clear about what we're training our teachers in teaching with regard to the resolution that we've passed. So, and I have had several phone calls from folks in and out of the district that are not talking about specific materials given to children, but how the teachers were trained to teach in the classroom. And so I just raised the issue, not to open any, anything up, I just think we need to have those discussions if we're going to define specifically, then we need to be sure we include PE as well.
And I agree with both of you, but I think as we go forward, the concern in defining is that there are so many different definitions, and there are so many splinters. is that there are so many different definitions, and there are so many splinters. I think ultimately for us to know that it is a college concept that began, and basically you see in law schools, that the concept itself is not taught in our schools. But when you talk about slavery and those things that are in our curriculum, that is taught. So in trying to find a definition, that's, that's the difficulty, because there's so many interpretations out there that people are running with in reference to CRT, that we don't even teach in our schools. So I applaud you. If there's any way that I can assist in trying to help you define, but there's so many ultimate definitions, when ultimately, it is a college concept and not a K through 12 concept at all, that we're even dealing with.
And even in that, you want to, for example, you have people that are reluctant to even talk about African-American history. African-American history is not CRT.
No, it isn't.
So we need to share what it is and what it's not. And, you know, as a board, we need to be proactive and take a leading role in kind of minimizing some of the confusion that exists.
Because there's a lot of.
A lot of.
National confusion.
And that's exactly what I'm questioning. So, yes, I really think it would be very helpful, and I understand the difficulty.
But Stephanie is going to start from the beginning, trying to define it. That's going, and I think that's where our input, or how we see, like you said earlier today, interpretations.
Yeah, and just look at our, what we put in the advisory, put it, take it from there.
Exactly. Which has nothing to do with CRT ultimately.
Well, and we're, you know, I have two attorneys in my family. I'm not an attorney, but I do know that it's not an easy task to assign, but especially with the different issues that you're dealing with. But I think there are easy parts to it that would be helpful to, because I think that's a perfect example. But that's a start.
There's the challenge.
Well, because you celebrate Black History Month. I mean, and another terminology, African-American, the same. Tomato, tomato.
Oh, no, here we go.
No, not that one.
I do have two questions.
At the end of it.
Yes, Dr. Cheston.
The first one, where are we with the revision of the courses study schedule? Specifically, social studies, that is long overdue.
Can we get that one first?
Yes.
Do you want to try to address that one?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I was thought you were still going. So, the social studies, we talked about that after last meeting. We're going to, we're going to bring you a revised schedule to look at. Science, we're definitely moving forward with next year. So I think we all understood that in the last meeting, because they've already begun that, the pre-work process to do science in 2023. What I've asked is for our staff to bring me a proposal for how we could do social studies then, the next year in '24. And then, of course, that pushes everything else, you know, disrupts some other things, and then try to get computer science into '25, which I think was '26. And so it would move that up a year. So we would move social studies up. You know, we don't have a social studies specialist now, so we're, as we hire somebody, that'll be, that'll be something they'll, because you start working on it again, like, they're working on science now. They've been already working on it for a couple of months, trying to, have to identify the people and all these things, so they can start work next January. Of course, you all have to do appointments and all this fall to get ready. So when we get a social studies person in, they will, within the first few months, have to begin work on that. But that's the plan right now, is to try to move it up to '24, right after science. Now, I do, now, you know, everybody knows that's going to be really hard on the staff to do two back-to-back core. I mean, to the point that we probably will have to search and hire additional couple of people, hopefully some retirees that could come back and help, because it's just not, you know, I mean, they're really good. Kathy Jones and Sean Stevens and that crew, they do great work. It's just a heavy task to do, of course, as a study. And doing two core back-to-back will be really hard. But we're beyond the pandemic. We know we have to do some things differently. So that's the plan, is to do science in '23, social studies in '24. One of the ways we might can mitigate that too, one is to try to hire a couple of retirees that maybe could help with it. And the other is, we might build in a little transition in between. So, as you know, we normally start in January, we try to finish up in December, and then we start, and this is where it gets hard, because then the next year, you do textbooks. So we would be doing science textbooks and social studies courses study at the same time. And that's why it's hard. So what we might do is even delay, do social studies in '24, but not start in January, like, give them till March to kind of get the textbook stuff going, and then start a little later. So, you know, just because we've always done it January to December, doesn't mean it has to be a January to December, but it would definitely move it up.
I appreciate Dr. Cheston bringing up this. So I thought we were going to be bringing that back this month. Are you going to bring us a proposal for the sequencing for our disposition, or what is the next step? I understand you're, I thought we were actually be dealing with that this month, and perhaps that delay continues on. Help me to understand where we're going to go, and what's the disposition, what's your recommendation going to come forward? You're still talking about.
So I did. Social studies in '23.
You're going to bring that as a written proposal? Or do we do that? I don't know what.
So the calendar, you vote on the courses of study and the textbooks when they come to you. The calendar is internal. You don't, you know, there's not a set calendar the board has to vote on. But I'll get you that schedule that we had last month. What I'll do is bring it back to you, show in those changes. What about that?
I thought, that's correct. I thought we were going to have this one, but I appreciate it when you get it ready. Thank you, Dr. Cheston, for bringing that up.
One last question. And I'm so grateful for the FTA group that we had here to see that we're really pushing to encourage students to go into education. However, we still have a teacher shortage crisis. And, but we continue to delay dealing with the crisis. Help me to understand why we are not addressing what we have publicly said is a crisis, but we continue to push it back, or just we won't deal with it. It just seems that we, again, have put ourselves in a position where we are reactive rather than proactive. You know, my heart goes out to the LEAs, because two months ago, we spoke about we were going to expedite. And since that time, the issue still remains, and I have, I mean, everybody here probably has school systems in their districts that are facing teacher shortages. Time was and is of the essence, because they have to notify their employees prior to the last working day of the academic year. We are not addressing it. It is not on the agenda. So we are not providing support to our LEAs to meet the needs of what we call the crisis. So my question is, help me to understand why this is happening.
Well, may I piggyback for you on that? I think in line with that, and I think the proposal that came from the teacher shortage group, was that we were going to look at the Praxis and perhaps the suspension for a couple of years. And so really, where we deal with that? Does that tie into your question?
You're specifically asking about the Praxis.
Yes.
Well, I'm just wondering why we are not facing the real issues. You know, what can you say to your constituents when they have explicitly stated, this is a problem, but we are not addressing the problem? So I'm just trying to understand why this is happening. I sat on that committee, served on that committee. We had a consensus of what was being brought before the group, but since that time, everything has changed. Now, unless there was a meeting I didn't know anything about, or I fell asleep or something, I just need to know what's happening.
Well, they've not met yet. Mr. Mark and I have talked, would like for that group to meet again in June, because I think they have to, you know, have some more discussions. I agree with you that there was consensus. It appears now that some of the people agreed to that consensus, don't agree anymore on the work group. It's just been a little confusing in that way. But the, so the, I guess the short answer to your question is, we're still gathering some data. So a lot of questions. I know the work we've met, which of course was superintendents, deans, certification officers, and did a marvelous job looking at what some options were. We asked them for some long-term solutions, short-term solutions. As you know, if you were there, one of the short-term solutions, and I can tell you, one that has become controversial to some degree, is, was to suspend, not eliminate, people kept using the word eliminate, to suspend the administration of the Praxis for a period of time while we work up a long-term solution. So since then, since the presentation to the board, I have, I've met with Praxis officials twice. I have talked to several of the deans, have talked to several business people who have concerns about the suspension of the Praxis, have talked to several lawyers who have concerns about the suspension of the Praxis, and just gathered those data. So my last meeting with Praxis, which is Educated Testing Service, ETS, I asked them to give us some information about what other states are doing with Praxis. I had a discussion yesterday with another state superintendent that they've made some changes. And I, and they've sent me some things. When I sent out more packets last week, I didn't have any of that information from Praxis, and felt like it was going to be really hard to ask you to have a discussion when you didn't have the information on what a long-term solution could look like, because I've heard from several of you, you have real concerns about doing a suspension, especially if you don't know what a, what the long-term solution might be. Like, what, how long would the suspension be, and what would we do at the end of it? Let me give you an example. The, so the question has come up, and this would ultimately be something we have to discuss. So let's say if we suspended it for this, for this fall, and students didn't have to pass the Praxis or make it the passing score, would they still have to take it, but not make the passing score? That's what the Praxis group calls a no-fault administration, which some states do. Okay, if the board ultimately came back and said, I mean, a number of things, we're going to have, we're going to reinstitute the Praxis, we're going to develop our own state test, as Georgia and Texas and New York, I think is another one who's done that, other states have done, we're going to do a floating scale. So there's a floating scale in some states where they look at the Praxis score and the EDTPA score and say GPA, or even supervising teacher recommendations, and they do a, you know, you have to have a piece of all of these, but not a, not a particular cut score on each one, because there can be, they can mix and match. So you might have a lower Praxis, but a higher EDTPA and a higher GPA, and they would balance out, or opposite. Because we've also gotten questions now about, from some who want to, who like the Praxis and want to do away with the EDTPA, which was not the recommendation. So, so anyway, looking at what some long-term solutions could be, that we could at least propose, let you know what it would look, what some long-term options might be. So we didn't have those last week. We did get them in yesterday. I got some things from Praxis, not a complete picture yet, but pretty good, and began to filter through those. And so I'd like to get you those, some options, what other states are doing, which I think could lend to a good conversation for the board upcoming. There is, so there's, there's, there's a concern that I'm hearing from mostly constituents out there, some from our higher ed partners, and also from some business folks, that we would suspend it and never do anything else, like it would just go away. And they don't want to end teacher testing, which was a long, hard, hard road that goes back to the 1970s in Alabama.
I think that history is important, because, I mean, not only did I live through it as a board member in the early stages when we brought it back, but I wrote about it as a reporter for the Advertiser Journal. And I remember we had, we had the NTE, we had the legislature trying to mandate teacher testing. It was taken to federal court. We came up with our own state test. That was questioned, and that was shot down again in federal court. Then the federal government, when I first became a board member, and you recall, as, you know, you were in the school system at the time, that was when they had the highly qualified teacher requirement. And I remember going to a meeting in DC, and they said, well, all the states, we had the, then Secretary of Education speaking to our group, and they said, well, all the states are going to have to be, are going to be required to have a teacher test. And so what about those states that are prohibited by the courts from having a teacher test? Because at that time, we were prohibited. It was an agreement. It was settled in federal court. And as a result of not only the federal requirement, but also a big push here in the state, primarily from the State Board of Education and then Superintendent Richardson, we went back to federal court. A friend of mine, who I went to high school with, happened to be our attorney at the time, Mike White, and he and others went to Judge Johnson, who, I mean, Thompson, but Judge Thompson, Johnson had been involved before. But the bottom line is that the Judge Thompson, Byron Thompson, agreed that we needed teacher testing in Alabama. And he did what was never done in these situations before. He brought it back, he revived it, and we survived in the state under monitoring. And you may recall that, we had, one of them was the then Auburn University Dean of the College of Education, was one of those who served as a monitor. But we worked through all of that. The Praxis was the agreement. No one wanted, in fact, NTE wouldn't come to the study. And so we ended up with a situation, and I was hearing from teachers, and I still hear from teachers, after our discussion, it was in the media, we don't need to get rid of what gives our profession stature. And then they start going down the list, like I would do, but they do, you know, engineers are tested, attorneys have to pass the bar, you have to maintain.
Nurses.
You know, nurses. I mean, like I said, the list is endless. It goes on and on. And there's a reason for that. But it brings stature, and not only credibility, but there's a, you know, that professionalism that I really think is so important. I think there is, again, I don't know that you'll see any lawsuits like we saw before, but I'm in that camp that thinks that we need to be very careful about the path that we take in this venture. And again, Alabama's had their own teacher test before. We've had teacher evaluation tools. We've had a lot of different things. You know, teachers have been through a lot of different, whatever, teachers evaluation. So I think that we need to be consistent for a while. I know we have the skill, the basic skills that they take going into the junior year, still in the colleges, I assume.
You did away with that requirement.
But there isn't, there's some kind of requirement to get into the College of Education?
Not right now.
Not now?
Some colleges make that.
That's what I thought, that's an option at the colleges. But that was actually, that's the one thing that they keep thinking is a good thing, because it's a, it's a way, it's a gateway, and it's an accomplishment. But in talking to those who have either been in the field or new to the field, a lot of newer teachers, her friends of our daughter's family, they, they don't want to do away with that. They think it's important, and it also, again, it brings that strength, that credibility, professionalism. But they even mentioned that gateway, that the fact that they like that. And it, it's not, oh, you're just going to be a teacher. It's not an easy route, and it shouldn't be. It should be one where you feel accomplished, because you are accomplished. Anyway, that's my speech. But going through that history, it's important.
I would say that I have heard from several deans in my district, and I have a law I would say that I have heard from several deans in my district, and I had a long, large meeting with a large number of senators, talking about what they had done, speaking to teacher retention. It's more than just the Praxis. They are very competent and proud of the things they did for teacher raises to promote teacher retention. And I do know that one of the deans that was on that committee told me that he didn't agree with the report, they'll eliminate the Praxis. And other deans are. The other day, you know, that I've asked the deans, if you're talking about, you have so many people that can't pass the Praxis, what is the total population that you're talking about? One dean told me that he had less than 10% that couldn't pass the Praxis, which is a statistic, is not an astounding number to me. But I think that we are involved in teacher retention. I think we've just asked to have form a committee on teacher retention, that I said I'd be on, but I'm sure all of the other board members may choose to be on that too. But the idea of testing and eliminating data point is a serious consideration. I do appreciate the work of the committee and their recommendations, but those are recommendations and input, among a lot of other components, that this board has to take before we modify those requirements. I also know that each university does treat the Praxis at a different level. Some make it a prerequisite to start in the teacher ed program, some make it a prerequisite to do student teaching. Those are decisions that post-secondary people have to make. I don't know if it's our role to correct or facilitate or implement their failure problem in their schools. I don't know why they have Praxis. I know the legislators in their discussion with me are concerned about the number of remedial courses that universities and colleges charge students, and the extra cost that that impacts on students. And they look at us as K-12 people somehow being responsible for that. But I also know that some of the admission requirements in some of our schools are lesser than others, and maybe that contributes to the passing of standardized courses. And I can tell you, of all the things that I've done in education, having a doctorate from Auburn and then taking a nursing program and having to pass the NCLEX, and knowing that score for every school, every, in Alabama is published, and schools are remediated or refused permissions to have nursing schools based on that one national exam is significant. And that's why I mentioned the NCLEX. It scared the, a lot of me, getting that score, because it would have been pretty embarrassing, but I did pass, so.
Dr. Mackey, can I make a request? When you present us with this, maybe next month, could we see, I've never known, I don't know that, I've thought about it, but the alignment of the Praxis scores, and I know there's different subject areas, but maybe just an average of how closely the questions on the Praxis, and I suppose it's the national one, because we don't have a Alabama Praxis, the national one, how it aligns with our standards? I mean, I'd like to think there's alignment with, with our, like, let's say, take social studies. If it was social studies, I'd like to know that it aligns with that.
We'll ask that. I don't know that we can get that, because it's a proprietary test. Now, that state, that's, so, that's why Georgia, that's why they did their own test, so they lined it to their own standards. But as been pointed out, when Alabama did its own test, we were sued.
But if Praxis did.
The settlement was to go to, to go for a test based on national standards and not Alabama standards, so.
Well, when we do ACAP, we, we chose that company, DRC, because they were going to align the questions, the content with our standards. And then with our teachers, you would think we would do something similar. And then a second request, I have so many people that don't know what EdTPA is, that I'll mention that we are doing EdTPA, and they act like it's nothing. And, and could we see, could we get copies next time of the rubrics? And, because I understand it's a very intense rubric that you have to do and complete, it, it's a lot of man-hours, it's a lot of work, but it also demonstrates to you guys, in colleges of education, how affected that candidate is in the classroom, teaching this subject matter. And so I would personally, and perhaps you would too, I would like to have more information on EdTPA and see what those rubrics, I don't know that we have to have them for all the subject areas, but at least have a sample, so that we can.
Maybe the two we were talking about, you know, the areas we were talking about, early childhood, elementary, the ones that the committee recommended.
Right.
Because in line with what you're saying, Dr. Reynolds mentioned something about the data points.
Right.
And there were just two tests that were mentioned, and that was the Praxis, perhaps suspension, and then keeping the EdTPA in line with your comment that shows the pedagogy in practice.
Right.
And that's what you're hoping to see a candidate be able to do.
Right, exactly. But I just, I feel like I need to be more informed. I've never had to do EdTPA. I've never had to grade it, score it, or be a candidate. And so I think it would help me, it was just like with allocates, when I didn't understand what that was, I went in and said, show it to me, I want to see what it looks like, 26 questions. So I feel like I would be more informed if I, if I had that information in front of me to be able to discuss it. And also, let's not forget that our candidates, I believe in elementary ed, this fall have to take the Foundations of Reading test. So that is another assessment that they will have to, to pass at a national level that will be in place.
My question was still not answered. As a retired educator, I value our profession, and I'm not trying to minimize the qualifications of an educator, but my question is, we still have school systems that are faced with teacher shortages, and we're not providing solutions. You know, we're just delaying, and their problems still exist. What are we going to do as a board? You know, I hear us talk about, we're going to develop this, we're going to develop that. Well, we have children that need teachers, that we need to have in the classrooms in the fall, and so we've got to come up with some type of solution. Now, when you look at EdTPA, and I know some people talk against it, but it provides you with evidence that an inspiring educator knows the content, and they are also able to implement the educational practices. My question, in the meantime, what are we going to do to support the school systems that are still in crisis in regards to teacher shortages?
So we do, I mean, some things have, I've gotten two, give you two examples, I've got two correspondents from superintendents since last week, in the last week, that are praising the work that's been done already. Like one said, that for the first time in her career, she's going to go into next school year with no in math, math or science openings, because of the work that's been done, the work with pay raise, the work with the teams, the work with the emergency certification, changes we've made to alternate certification. So it's working, I mean, she called just to let me know it's working. Another superintendent sent a message just over the weekend, and, and the, you know, praises, these are, things are working. Thank you for the work that's been done, it is getting better. Now, there are still, so there's still pockets where the shortage is much worse than others. And there's still shortages everywhere, so even in the, I mean, there are just not enough teachers out there. So I think that, I mean, it does have to be a multi-pronged approach. I mean, y'all, you're all talking to each other, I think there is, speaking to you, a lot of concern around the table here about suspending the Praxis without, just suspending the Praxis. I, I'm hearing that from y'all individually, I'm not giving up your individual conversations, but many of you have called me, and again, I've gotten calls from many other people outside, some of whom may be calling you too. So, I mean, I think that the suspension piece is almost to the point for this year, it's not, you know, even if the board wanted to do that in the summer, those students who would be ju, rising juniors waiting to see about student teaching, I don't know that it would affect their student teaching this coming year. I don't, not saying it would not, and that's certainly up to the board. But the, the, looking at what other states are doing, as far as whether y'all would be open to doing a floating scale, like I talked about, so, you know, an EdTPA versus a Praxis score, there are at least two other states that I've looked at, that what they do is they offer a, a lower, a lower Praxis score for a, what we might term, a pre-professional certificate. So in other words, let's say a cut score is a 150, and a student scores a 148, then could we offer them a cer, their first certificate at a 148, and give them then until, you know, they renew the certificate five years later, whatever, typically on five-year schedules, to hit the 150? So they wouldn't get a permanent certificate, but they'd get a, a practicing or pre-professional, or in some states they call it provisional certificate, while they are still trying to hit that score. There are, there are also states that have a, I don't know how to explain this, but they, they encourage the Praxis more at the end. So we have a lot of our institutions require the Praxis to be taken before student teaching, and, and so that, that kind of stops them in their tracks in their se, going into their senior year, or in their senior year in many cases. We have some institutions that don't require that, that's not a board requirement. We have some institutions that normally requirement, require, but waived it during the pandemic. So they now have students who have completed their coursework, completed student teaching, completed EdTPA and passed it, and have not passed one or some number of their Praxis exams. Usually it's just one. And so we know that right now, as just mentioned, in March, there are a number of students, over 100, I don't, I think we even have a number somewhere, I don't want to give an exact number, because I don't have it, who are in that situation in the state. The only thing holding them up is the Praxis. Also, I don't know if any states adopted this, but I know that a couple of states are looking at, for the, the teacher shortage crisis, lowering their Praxis score. So we have, over the years, raised our Praxis scores multiple times, and now we're, we're as high as anybody out there, I think, in the country. But there are states looking at going back to, say, minus one or minus two standard errors of measure, to make sure that they have a complete, you know, that they have greater, they have lesser room for error. I mean, I don't know a lot of way to say it. If we, if our score, I know this overall, because I have this data in my head, if we lowered the standard error of measure for two, minus two, two standards of error, two standard errors of measure, we have about 1,100 more students that would have passed the, the Praxis in the 20, I think it's 2019 to 2021. So not, those are not people sitting there right now, but over this past couple of years, we would have had 1,100 more if we had, if our standard had been two standard errors of measure.
Is it now one standard error measurement?
No, it's, it's the, we're at the national average.
So what would happen if we used it for, that one, I mean, you know, I'll talk about statistics, but one standard of error of measurement is significant, is, is what you usually rely on.
I think it's about 700 that we would pick up if we went one standard error.
I could understand going to one standard error, but not, I'm not certain, in my background, that two standard errors of measurement is even something I would consider.
Going back to Dr. Chestnut's original question, understand that the reason we had this down for a discussion item today, appears it is again, it's fine, but I pulled it because I didn't have all this information to you ahead of time, and I felt like it was better to get it to you ahead of time, because I didn't have it. I got it yesterday, and so now I'm trying to, you know, go through it in my mind and get it to you before June, and you've asked for some additional things, like Dr. McCarty's asked for, so I had to go back to them, and I will ask about that, like the, if they can show us alignment to our state standards. I don't know for sure if they can, or if they would, because it's a national exam. Now, Praxis does administer state standard exams. They do that in Georgia. Their, the exam they use in Georgia is a Georgia exam based on Georgia state standards, not the national standards, but it's not, you know, it's not an Alabama test, it's a Georgia test.
So would that then be aligned to state standards and chip standards? When you say our state standards? I don't know what that would be.
I don't know. I don't know, I'll have to, I mean, I can't answer those questions, so I don't mind asking them, but I have them.
Going back to your original request, are you, you're referring to an overall review of everything. It's like the teacher who tells me that they're retiring, and I'm thinking, you're not old enough to retire, even though they're technically, you know, they have the number, oh, I have the number of years, and so, well, why are you leaving? I just can't put up with it anymore. The children, I cannot, I have no respect, I have, I have tried every trick in the book as far as classroom management, nothing works, I'm not backed up by my principal, or my principal can't, is not backed up by the next level, whatever it is, there are all these things that are beyond the Praxis. Praxis is never included in that discussion, and bringing in 1,100 more, if you're, if they're going out the door and double that number because of the fact that this is ultimately what it leads to, I can no longer teach. I can no longer teach with all the mandates that I'm getting, I'm being told how I'm supposed to teach, what I'm supposed to teach, I can't teach, I know what works, I've been in the classroom for 10, 15 years or longer, and it's just, it's, it's not worth it anymore. Even though I love my children, and it always comes back, I love what I do, I love my children, but they're not letting me do what I love to do. And that seems to be at the heart of, and if you look at the latest report, where it talks about the average teacher, new teacher, I think it's three years, which is not long at all for someone to give it time to really enjoy what, what they went to school to do. So we're actually, we're talking about all these things like Praxis, and that's, that's, that's significant, but the real thing is, why are they leaving in large numbers? And it's not just happening here in Alabama. You hear the same thing at these meetings at the national level, other board members, and now I've talked to legislators from other states, it's the same thing. I'll sit next to a teacher who's a, I mean, a senator, a state senator from Minnesota, I'm a former teacher, tells me this story. I left the classroom because, and it's the same thing. I mean, I wanted to do, I wanted to stay in education, and they'll go into a different avenue, they'll, you know, go into higher ed, whatever it is, that will keep them there because they love it, but the reason why they leave the classroom is all of the other.
Dr. Mackey, and I, I agree with what Ms. Bell is saying, there's some controversy on the number, the percent that leave the teaching profession in the first three years. Is there a way for us to get accurate information on the number that leave? I mean, that's a pretty high percentage. And then, we did, AIG did that survey last year, and Mr. Purcell, Dr. Purcell, came and, and presented to us, and, and one of the big issues, to your point, is, is classroom management issues. And then what are we doing, you know, to take charge? Because yes, we want to recruit, and we want to keep, you know, we want to have our fine colleges of education graduate teachers, but then they're graduated, they're certified, we don't want to lose them. And so what can we do to keep them and address that shortage as well, but, and what are we doing?
So remember, Dr. Lewis came and did a presentation on that in December, she could come back and redo it next month if you wanted to, but she did a big presentation on all the things we're doing to support, um, school discipline, and, and there's really well-received work they do when they go into schools, so, I mean, we're still doing it.
Well, and Dr. Mackey, this is a bigger point, but would, could we get, and I would say, probably all of us would be interested in this, I would like to see, because I'd love to drop in on some, if possible, all the PD that is occurring this summer. I would like to see, because I'd love to drop in on some if possible, all the PD that is occurring this summer, all of that, like the topics, the locations, the dates, so that we could drop in if we wanted. I'd love to go to a session on classroom management and just pop in for a little bit and see, you know, how are they helping those teachers to address these issues? And, and yes, I'm sure that in college they, y'all have classes and lessons on it. But then sometimes students don't ever think it's going to affect them. And so they may not pay attention until they're in that classroom and then they realize they need more, more training and how to deal with some issues that they never thought they were going to face. And so just, and all the topics, I mean, I would love to drop into some STEM PD. But whether it's mega conference or, or classroom management, um, or in service centers or wherever it might be or whatever topic, if, if we can have, and it may not be comprehensive. And I realize that some sessions may not make and you may have to cancel them. I understand that. But just, it would be nice to see what's being offered so that perhaps at some point we could pop in and, and visit and see, and so that we're all working together and everything's aligned.
Well, can we also get a real, just, sure, if, you know, you have this little piece over here. You're talking about the, um, discipline. Obviously, there's so many teachers who are leaving at some, really recently. It seems to be this flow. And I know a lot of it has to do with age groups that come in and then age, the retirement and so forth. But on the other hand, um, can you put in writing and perhaps add that to the agenda beyond just the Praxis discussion as perhaps a part of that? But let's look at what we, what you say that we are doing in order to retain teachers. What we, what are we doing? I know at one point the board passed a mandate to require more time in the classroom, what has traditionally been called student teaching, because we felt like that would be helpful before graduating from a teacher ed program. But let's look at what, just a long list. If you can bring that together for us for the next meeting so that we see in writing what you think that we're already doing, um, to try to retain teachers. Do you have any other suggestions to add to that discussion piece?
We have a retention task force coming up.
But we are, we are, we're, that's part of our jobs. And so we need to take the lead on that and incorporate what the task force says. And I think that's what you're trying to say is to let's do it.
I'm saying you all still haven't answered my question.
Hey, I will say this.
You need teachers and you need them now.
Yeah, I will, I will say this, Dr. Chestnut. I took this to heart, uh, because I haven't had your formal professional experience. And so as a former local school board member, the only thing I need to do was to start calling my superintendents and asking them, they're the ones that have to hire. They're the ones that have to fill the new positions. They're the ones who have to bring in new teachers from our colleges of education. What are the challenges? And I will tell you, the, the conundrum is I have high performing school district superintendents who value the Praxis, want the Praxis and absolutely want that to remain in place. They say for the content knowledge. At the same time, I have high performing superintendents that absolutely love EDTPA, want EDTPA, insist on EDTPA. And I think the rub is that there are high performing districts that value both. And then I spoke to an official from Tennessee and they require both. They actually require the Praxis and EDTPA. Scores are different. So as, as someone with just limited knowledge about this very complicated subject, I think that I need more time to get Dr. Mackey's, the information he's gathering because I don't feel like I understand enough at this point. And I do want more young people going into the field of education. And I do want our colleges recruiting more students and making that a priority. But their trustees have to make that a priority. We can't make those decisions for them. And so it is, um, it is a conundrum. And I just want to share with you that I have, I have reached out to multiple superintendents across the district and I am getting very different answers.
Yes, all right.
Well, this is why, you know, I have to, this is my brain. I have to visualize it. I'm a glasser girl. So I see a puzzle piece and one of those pieces is, you know, bringing the new, the new kids on the block, so to speak, Praxis, EDTPA. That's only one part of this puzzle. The whole, I mean, it is so complex, but we have to remember that is totally different than teacher retention. Teacher retention is a whole nother ballgame. And at one time, and I don't know who spoke to this, ages, but this is life. As those go out, we have the newbies coming in. Well, what's happening is that we're having the newbies going out with the oldbies. So what we need to be looking at, first of all, it was a delight to see the kids. I wish the legislators had been there last night to see what phenomenal things are going on in these teachers of the year, Monday, the banner schools. We are not getting out what fabulous things are going on. But having said that, we, one thing I've learned, you've got to be totally transparent. You tell them what great things are happening, but you have to also share your warts. And our warts are these difficult areas. That's what's sending them out the door, more so than the accolades. And they need to be appreciated and loved, but they also feel if they're not supported, that might be the breaking point. That might be what it's not worth to them. Yeah, I did have some calling me and saying, I was going to go out the door, but this new salary makes me, I'm coming back. But that's good. That's, that's a help. But that, there, there's my little other puzzle, puzzle piece. But we have to quit just keeping one eyeball on one piece. We've got to get the whole picture. And when we're done, then guess who wins? The kids of Alabama, my kidlets.
And I, I agree with you, but we got to get them in to be able to retain them. If we don't ever get anybody in.
Yeah, but we got to keep them in the ones we have.
Let me qualify, let me clarify something on the retention piece. So there was an article in this crane that I was here, we talked about this afterwards. So there's a, there is a report out there, another state agency did a report. It, if you look at just the top paragraph, it looks like, like 50% of our teachers are leaving. It's not, they're not leaving the profession, they're changing schools. And so when you look at the ones that did really well, Mr. Markham's old stomping ground Roanoke actually had the highest in the state. You say, well, what's happening? Well, what happens is there, and he could better speak to it, but they have a lot. I mean, they have one great school system, great school culture, a lot of people come back home and they stay. So when they hire, their number was like over 70% are still there five years later. We have other schools and there's no question, some of them are very difficult schools to teach in, have less supportive parent communities, more transient communities. And teachers, you know, I know one particular school I won't mention, they were like 27%. But it's not that, I mean, we look at the numbers, they don't leave, they're not leaving the profession. They're going to another school. They're going to a Roanoke. And so, um, we are, thank goodness, we are in the process. No, y'all may have heard some of this, but, but our locals are now having to enter teacher, teacher data for the first time for us in our, in power school. And we will be able in the future to track where teachers are, where they are. We don't have, we've never had it before, but we've, we have that capacity. They're having to enter the data this year. They're not all happy about it. But in the future, we'll be able to track when teachers move from school to school and not just by certifications. And what we have now, we know how many certified teachers there are. And again, if you read the report, it said there's enough certified teachers out there to cover all the teacher shortage. So there's, there's technically not a teacher shortage. Well, I have a teacher certificate. Chuck Markham has a teaching certificate. I mean, there's a lot of people have teaching certificates that are not teaching. So just because you have a teaching certificate doesn't mean you're teaching. And so we, we've had to go back and forth with them on the data. That there are, yeah, there are a lot of people out there holding teaching certificates who are not teaching. But even giving you the example where we gave clemency this year, that's probably one of the most popular things we've ever done. People who had surrendered their teaching certificate, not for cause, that they just didn't renew it. And they, um, we said, without going back and doing new CEUs or going back to school, you can have your teaching certificate back.
And get mine back.
And we had, yes, you can get yours back. So, and we've had, I don't know how many dozens of people, 500 people last month asked for a teaching certificate back. I saw a guy Sunday at church who retired like 16 years ago and he's going back to work as a special education teacher because, because he didn't want to go back to school to renew his teaching certificate. But once we said he could just have it back, he just took it back. So there are things we're doing and they are helping. It's not, it's, as you've said, it's not, um, you know, none want, no one piece is going to make it, is going to change everything. The piece that's the most, most controversial is the Praxis discussion.
I thought your letter was very well done. I want to recognize that. But I will say one thing, I think it's important that we feel teachers, that it's also important that they be quality educators. And the last thing we can afford to do is leaders, leaders in Alabama and some former superintendent and teacher and principal, just to hire people who don't do a good job. And that's our job is to try to what, see what components comprise a good system and a good teacher. And that's a function we face. And I don't think any of us want to save people in order to put bodies in the classroom to do not a good job.
Well, and adding to that as well, um, Dr. Mackey, you mentioned, Dr. Mackey, you mentioned Roanoke City. Well, Roanoke used to be in my district. And of course I, it was in my, the very first time, so I, I really consider it still in my district. But I know why they have a really high retention. I mean, Chuck was a big factor in that. And it was like a family. You go in there and it was a lot of fun to visit. You know, it really was and, and still is, obviously. It's a lot of, they, people enjoy being there. Is there any way perhaps that we could as a board set up model schools like that? Use those, that model as something that we can, we used to do that all the time as a board. And it was actually, um, very helpful. It wasn't just in that, but to me, that's the ideal. You know, when we would look at schools that were doing well, um, despite the fact, you know, all of the excuses that are given, we would use those schools as model schools and we would try to emulate them.
We have that already. AL.com did an article.
And I think, but I think we, we need to take exactly what's happening, and I can go in my district as it currently stands, Dr. Mackey.
Cause three are in.
I know classroom management skill, I'm telling on you. Um, but the fact is that we have small systems and we have large systems where we can actually take those school systems and use them as models. And what we used to do, we didn't take these teams of people from different systems where they were having difficulties out of state. We took them to schools within our own state because in Alabama, we actually have schools that are doing quite well. Um, and I can use some, Piedmont used to be in my district. I remember visiting Piedmont and in spite of the fact that they had, they needed a new boiler system and it was in really bad shape as far as the college, I mean, the auditorium and so forth. It was a really, and you know.
It's an awesome school.
It's an awesome school and you'd see all of the parents that were involved. But that's what we have in Alabama. So why not as a board create, um, our own model retention program? Uh, of course, we would work with colleges of education. I know part of the success with Jacksonville City Schools because you had that connection with Jacksonville, um, you know, State University. And so again, that was in my district. But, you know, Roanoke is a perfect example of a small city school system where it's, they have to go long distance sometimes to get to in, in the county itself to get to school. But I always felt like this is my home. I'm ready to stay the day and the night and, you know, whatever. But that's the feel that you get in a successful school. And that's what we, I think as a board, we could start with that as a model and certainly try to see what works. Um, we pretty much know what works and of course the experts are out there and they know. But I, I think, you know, I have in my own district, schools that would be impossible. Dr. Reynolds I know has in, in your, and you have many.
Well, we honored three today.
Yeah.
Yes.
And so I think that's where we start. And I think we could even say in Montgomery County, we've had, um, where I, I'm a graduate of Montgomery County schools and went all the way through from first grade to graduate from Jeff Davis. It, it's an area where we still have these pockets, um, with the schools individually, but we also have these systems. And so perhaps Dr. Markham, um, Chuck can kind of help with us on that because you know.
We'll put that, he's leading that retention task force, so we'll put that on there. Dr. Chestnut, I know that's not.
An answer.
Good answer, but I, I just.
When you don't get an answer, you recognize there is not one.
But I promise we're working on it.
We don't have a solution.
Well, you've identified the problem and that's the problem.
We still have issues with teacher shortages. We don't have a plan.
Well, I, you like me, have a lot of poverty in your district. You have rural areas that young people don't really want to move to because there's nothing happening there. There's no social life for them. And that's something that, that we have to try to overcome. It looks like we've done everything we can do and the legislature has helped us to try to make it easy to get people to come into the classroom. And it seems like the easier it becomes, the shorter period of time a person stays in the classroom. And as far as the Praxis goes, I'm, I'm okay either way on that. But it's tough in the classroom. And universities do a great job trying to teach people what to do once they get in there. But I can tell you that, that first day when I walked into a real classroom with real kids, I was terrified. It was fine, it was fine a week or two, but after about that third week, you're going to be tested, you're going to be tried, you're going to see what you're made of. They're going to see what you're made of emotionally, mentally. They're going to see how much pressure you can take. And it takes a special individual and a tough individual to be able to withstand that. Hey, I taught eighth, seventh and eighth grade for nine years. I'm not afraid of anything. You, it's not necessarily the size of the person, it's the mindset and how you produce those people. I don't know. And how, and what does colleges do? Have a, this is the, this is the real world when you go in the classroom. Can you cry if somebody calls you a bad name? Well then you might want to rethink this career because you're going to be called a bad name regularly. I mean, the reality of it is, is different than the public perception many times. And we need these people who are coming in to know the reality of it. And having a great administrator is wonderful. I've worked for great administrators and I've worked for really poor administrators. And when there's a poor administrator, you just have to take that responsibility yourself and you have to prove yourself over and over again. I care about you, but you're going to learn in this room. And you're going to learn because I care about you. And this is going to be what happens if you do that again, because you are keeping other people from learning and you are keeping me from doing my job. And that's not going to happen in here. So if you're constantly standing your ground, usually the beginning of the year, once you get established and they're going to test you and they're going to try you and they're going to push you. And, and it is really hard. If you're not a strong emotional and mentally strong person, you can't. I mean, that's just the way it is. But you tell me how y'all can present courses. If you present the reality, I bet you're probably going to run the people away. I mean, really.
Yes, thank you so much. Great comments. Okay, we have some educator preparation program representatives here on the agenda that needs to leave when we break for lunch, which is just a few minutes. Um, item number five, resolution to extend approval of educator preparation programs at Athens State University. I was told number five, someone here from Athens?
Yes, Dean Bartanian is back there.
Yes.
Can we talk on the phone?
Yes.
All right.
Thanks for having me.
Questions and questions?
So, he has several programs up, as you see, uh, behind tab five for Athens State. They have Class B Biology 612, Class B Chemistry 612. Class B, remember Class Bs Bachelors, all these are Class Bs, I'm reading that. But Collaborative Special Ed K6 and Collaborative Special Ed 612. Elementary Childhood P3, Early Childhood P3, Elementary Education K6. English Language Arts 612, General Social Studies 612. Health Education and Fiscal Education, 612 for Health and P12 for Fiscal Ed. And then History 612, Mathematics 612, Fiscal Education 612, Technical Education 612, and Visual Arts, P12. And Dean Bartanian, I don't know what your staff's gonna be doing, but it looks like a lot of work.
Before Dean speaks, I want to tell you, I hope we don't create a problem, it's because we have teacher retention hot issues in North, uh, Black Team.
Teacher.
Yep.
Everywhere, of course, but we're doing our best to, to recruit, getting to fix this teacher shortage. That's a big part of our, our priority, my personal priority as dean, to do what we can to recruit more and more teachers into the profession, and to retain them while they are with us, and keep them in there, and get them out there in the schools making a difference. So, uh, glad to be a part of it, and glad to be a part of the solution.
I see your cape accredited, congratulations.
We are, thank you, thank you. We're excited about that, that was a really good process, and very instructive, and it was helpful for us to kind of think about how we're growing, and how we're using data, kind of similar to this discussion, to figure out how we improve and get better, and have those tough discussions so that we're doing the best we can for our students.
And the Literacy Act with science of reading emphasis.
Yes.
Do you, for the, um, early childhood education and elementary education, do you require the science of reading, letters training of your students?
Well, we, we integrate completely the science of reading in our literacy instruction. That's been a big focus for us over the last few years, as we've responded to the Alabama Literacy Act, letters specifically. We're still trying to figure out how we include that in there, because it's a proprietary program. And so, it, that's a bit of a pickle that, that we're trying to figure out, and I know a lot of the other institutions, some of them have figured it out, some of them are still trying to figure it out, and so.
I'm a, I work at JSC, not in education, but they seem to have a handle on it. So, I would recommend if you're, you know, interested, not kind of force that everybody has individual needs and that sort of thing, but I'm sure they'd be happy to talk with you.
Absolutely, yep, looking forward to it.
No more questions? Thank you so much, Dean.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. All right, um, number eight, we have a representative, resolution to extend approval of educator preparation programs at University of West Alabama. Someone was here? Okay, well.
I think I was told eight.
And then number nine, then, uh, resolution to extend approval of educator preparation programs at Miles College. Oh, where are you, you're from?
Number five, Alabama State University.
Yeah, I think you've got, I don't.
You're number four.
You were number four, and I was given five, on our sheet, I'm sorry, it's five, Athens. So, we'll go back to four before Miles, Alabama State, come on up, you may come on up. Resolution to extend approval of educator preparation programs at Alabama State University, number four. Yes, Alabama State. Because I was giving the numbers five, eight, and nine, which does not coincide.
On our agenda, it's four.
These on ours too.
I mean, we're giving five on the one.
Welcome.
Thank you. Yes, okay. All right, questions? Uh, number four, for Alabama State University, board members have questions?
They have a lot in there too.
Yes, they have a lot.
My same one, about science of reading. Do you embrace science of reading in instruction in your schools?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, one of the things that we've done to embrace the science of reading is that we have deliberately gone out to recruit more reading and literacy teachers globally. Um, and one thing that we're doing is to try to put online programs in, in reading, um, in our Masters of Science in, in Teaching of Reading, so that's one of the things that we're doing.
Okay.
You're welcome, my friend.
All right, and? I'd hate to bring you up here and make you wait, just by telling you I see your. Is there anything that you'd like to say to us?
Yeah.
I mean.
Any words of wisdom?
Well, I, I will, well, thank you for having us come today to be able to communicate and talk to you all. Um, we've been working very hard, especially for me coming, as an external person to Alabama. Uh, with the science of reading, going back to that, is, uh, I came from Washington DC, and one of the things that I will say is the processes that you have to look at the accreditation, accreditation, um, with your chip reports, it's phenomenal. Um, and it speaks to some of the specialized professional associations that I've worked with throughout my career. So, thank you.
Thank you. For that feedback.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. All right, we do have someone, uh, number six from Auburn, resolution to extend approval of educator preparation programs, Auburn University.
Never would've guessed he was from Auburn.
So, Auburn is two pages worth of programs that are coming up. Uh, and you see, the proposal is to, uh, extend them through June 30th, 2028, several different years, so.
Class A and Class A and Class double X.
Yes. B, A, double A.
Masters and Specialist.
I was just curious, uh, your enrollment numbers currently in the college?
Undergraduate students, we have around fifteen to sixteen hundred undergraduate students in the College of Education. About sixty, fifty to sixty percent of those are in education majors. We rely a lot, we just graduated this semester, close to a hundred and seventy initial certification individuals who are.
And do you require the praxis prior to that student teaching?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and, um. Oh, man, I had a follow-up question about, and it just left me, does that ever happen to y'all? It just totally disappears, and it's right there.
Well, we just wanted to add maybe to the discussion about the praxis with, with our school partners. We've asked them, do you want, and this was before there, there was talk about suspending it, but we asked, do you want our clinical residents to have passed the praxis prior to their clinical residency? And, and they really did, um, want that, because they felt that then, that kind of ensured that they had the content and they could work more on the teaching. And so, we've had discussions, you know, because we thought, well, maybe if they took it while they were doing their clinical residency, more could get into that. But they, they felt pretty strongly that they would prefer them to pass it.
I remembered. Do you specifically, or is it the university, do you have a cap on that enrollment?
Several programs do have caps, elementary education has a cap. Most of the, the other programs do not. Um, part of our challenge is at the university level, the number of students that they allow the College of Education to, um, I guess, or the number that they accept.
Identify as college.
Yeah, but as identify, that number is capped at about five percent, so.
So, it's important for the board to understand that, that you have challenges in recruitment.
Right.
And, and the people you can, the numbers you can put in, am I correct in saying that?
If, if I went to one of the students that were here, we could not guarantee them admissions at the university. Even though we would heavily recruit them.
Even though you would heavily recruit them, the admissions standards for universities, not just yours, present a challenge.
True.
I had heard that, I understood that, I felt it was important for the board to be aware of that challenge, because that, I do think that's an important piece that we get across to our universities as we're actively trying to recruit students into education. So, thank you, that was my, my last question. And I'm sorry to put you on the hot seat, but since I live in your community, I felt like I was okay to do that.
Just, just to follow up, we do have a number of initiatives, including what we call Path to the Plains with our local community colleges, Southern Union, I think we'll bring it on, CAC, Central Alabama Community College, that would help those students transition into the teacher ed program directly, and we can control, we do have a little bit more of control in admissions in that process for transfer students.
So, for example, in other states, I've heard of programs called bridge programs, where you bridge to a, to a four-year school from a two-year, and so, that's great. Do you know how many students you're, you're starting to see bridge over?
Not, less.
Too soon.
Too soon. Uh, the pandemic kind of put a halt on some of those students' progression, but it's a really nice agreement where classes will count for both Southern Union and us, or CAC and us, and so they're earning dual credit at both institutions.
I understand the history behind increasing the standard for admission at Auburn and some of the other colleges and state, and it seemed like the University of Alabama and Fisk-Lucent, and that other school. Got a very good school that you. I have a daughter and a husband who graduated from Law School at Alabama, but the, one went to Sanford undergrad, one went to Auburn. And I'm an Auburn grad, so. I understand the reason for increasing that, uh, those admission requirements, but there seemed to be that natural competition. I remember that time when one would increase it, and then, you know, and that, anyway. The bottom line there would be, how can we, because the idea is to have the best. And you certainly had, at that point in time, I recall, that both schools had problems with being able to house students. That was the olden days, now they have really nice facilities, they're really nice. But the, the factor, you know, the fact that we, we don't need to lower standards, you bring in these students, is there a way to connect with those students beforehand to ensure that, because it, again, it goes back to K-12. We need to do something from our end to ensure that what we are able to send you, or those students who graduate, actually, that diploma means something. And it prepares them for that foundation. I know if you have someone going into med school, you don't want someone who starts preparing after they've gone through two years of college. You want someone, and you have to have, because it's so competitive, you need, they need to start, even in elementary school, with those courses. Certainly, that would be another perspective, not just saying going into teaching, but just generally providing a foundation that would allow them not only to take care of the entrance requirements for this, to college, but also, um, perhaps even increase the requirements for, because I'm not into trying to just get anybody into the program, which is what you're, obviously, if you have a cap, you can. But if you have one recommendation, not only for, um, helping to attract and recruit, but also to retain, once you've sent someone out into the world, and we'll say into Alabama's public schools, how, what are those two recommendations? One for attracting and recruiting, but the other would be for, um, not only keeping them there during college, but more importantly, to retain them once they're in the teaching.
I think some of the, the programs that we've been doing are, but Romeo Rome, so we started that in some of the local areas. Um, and we have, um, and in math, they, they received a federal grant that, that takes them out into the local schools. So, they'll recruit from the local schools, train, and then they'll actually follow them up for three or four years to, to provide professional development and mentoring to keep them in the field. So, I think, you know, starting, and then we've also connected with the Future Teachers of America programs, or Alabama programs too, um, to get those students.
I had the opportunity to talk to your dean, and I know he's ill, and please tell him to like, wish him well. He's had a minor medical problem, which he's working through, and he seemed very pleased with the program and the activities and the passing rates and the test scores. And I admitted to him, as an Auburn graduate, I might not get into Auburn now because of some of the requirements, but that's part of the decision that the trustees are making at Auburn. And I certainly, as a graduate, support that and understand that. But that's a reality that the dean talked to me about and works with. And that has positive effect in that he has higher quality components to educate. And so, it is just a reality that is at Auburn, and the trustees chose those criteria, am I correct?
Yeah, yes.
I assume you're.
As I understand.
All right, anyone else? Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much.
In the way you're on the way.
Number seven, is anyone here from the University of Alabama at Birmingham? Yes, come on up, okay, resolution to extend approval of educator preparation programs, University of Alabama at Birmingham.
Well, I can have you ladies, I, I had a son that graduates a Blazer last weekend. We talked about that when I saw you, so. Go Blazers. Um, they also have a number of programs in here, so it goes on to three pages, so I won't read them. Let y'all.
B, Class A, and, um, double A.
How's enrollment?
It's the crime. We're working, um, we have some retention initiatives in place that we're trying to, to recruit. Uh, we just had a huge, um, summit where we're looking at some factors that the institution can establish to impact retention, such as academic support, financial support, assess the belonging for our students, so we're trying to implement some of those initiatives to help as well.
I have to ask, do you require the praxis prior to your student, prior to student teaching?
Yes, prior to student teaching. For our second, for our secondary programs, for our early childhood and elementary programs, those individuals have to take and pass the praxis prior to admission.
I know UAB has had dramatic growth, the whole institution, and it is admirable. And I have a son that has, with the medical school at UAB, so, and we had frequent visits in your programs and your campus, and the urban environment that you're operating in is very admirable, and I, I appreciate what you're doing very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else?
Blazer graduate, sort of. Yes, graduate, sort of. I mean, well, she went to dental school there.
I can't lie, so.
Our current dean is the associate dean of the dental school lately.
It's a great program, and it's a really neat campus, the way that you take in the urban.
Just grow.
We're trying to create some more green space, but we have our share.
And a good football team, incidentally.
Yes, yes, yes.
What's your biggest challenge?
If you say enrollment, we could also say that we have a dedicated person now, so the, the school, of course, has one, but also the School of Education has our own recruitment person. And right now, our interim associate dean is the vice provost for enrollment management. So, he's trying to help us with that, that was an area that we identified with the K group as being an area for growth.
And congratulations to you all, thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number eight, resolution to extend approval of educator preparation programs, University of West Alabama.
How are you?
Pretty good.
So, you've also got a pretty good list, goes on to two pages. I think you've got Class A and B, I don't know if there were any double As in there. Yeah, there are some double As on the first page, yep. So, turn it over to you. I know, I predict one of the questions is gonna be, how's your enrollment? I know, I predict one of the questions is going to be, how's your enrollment?
Let's go right.
They're just doing pretty good, actually. At West Alabama, we're certainly seeing an increase in enrollment. And I think a big piece of that is due to the stability of the development of the online programs. Dr. Miller's done a really good job at the university of putting those together well with on-staff instructional designers to make sure that you still have that rigorous content and those pieces. But we're certainly seeing an increase in elementary ed, not so much in secondary ed programs as other universities that would generally be face-to-face as well. So, we still do offer the traditional face-to-face model, but we've seen an increase in the online, certainly, you know, since COVID came in. And that may have been a benefit of COVID to the university. But it's been a gradual, kind of gradual increase in specific areas such as elementary and ed leadership, certainly, teacher leadership. So, specific programs, we, we've definitely seen growth.
Is your online population mostly in-state students, or is it?
They are mostly in-state, but spread out across the state vastly.
I just like, we, you know, selfishly, we'd like to keep them in Alabama if we, if we could, but. And the science of reading, is that difficult to teach in your online courses?
Well, that's something I might be directly involved with, but we are in a development phase. I know there's a team examining, actually adding another course. And it may have already been presented, if I'm not mistaken, but strengthening that, that area. And I know everyone has been required to go through the letters training that's been taking place. So, it's full steam ahead. I do know that much about it. And the work that we're doing with BART still, you know, I think has been a, been a benefit as well too.
Excellent. That's good to hear.
Thank you. I have just one more question. It's not really board, well, it is sort of board related, but there's a charter school that I keep hearing about, and I understand that the College of Education had something to do with getting it started, and there's a partnership with the university. I keep hearing great things about.
Yeah, it's actually located within the, the College of Ed. It's in our College of Ed building, actually. So, they're actually building a new building on campus as well, but it's the University Charter School. It's right now up to the 11th grade. They'll be adding 12th grade next year. So, it's seeing steady growth. And then that grow, grow your own is kind of, you know, that rural education area, that black belt is kind of, you see a lot of that, certainly at West Alabama, because you get them and then they go to the charter, and they go get the undergrad, and they come back to West, get the masters, and get the EDS. And about 13 actual completers of West's programs are teachers at the charter school as well. So.
I keep hearing great things. That's interesting. It's a really close partnership.
Anyone else? Thank you. All right, number eight, resolution, okay, no, number nine, resolution to extend approval of educator preparation programs at Miles College.
Do you know anything about that?
I do.
Dr. Green is a great guy. He's got a smaller list here, smaller institution, smaller list. But how's, how's your enrollment?
Since you asked, we've had two straight years of enrollment increase at Miles College. Sure, we are a wonderful, wonderful jewel, small college in the Birmingham area. And by the way, I feel your pain because I did teach middle, middle school, so seven years. I, I'm not afraid of nothing either.
Anybody else?
Science of reading?
Yes.
I just got prompted. I'd be disappointed.
Yes, we have incorporated science of reading. We have a wonderful person who we brought aboard with a number of years who have worked also in association with the State Department of Education in this area. So, we are very excited about increasing that particular area. Very excited.
Do you administer the practices to your students at one point?
Of course, we require the practices test before students go out and do an internship, commonly known as student, a form of student teaching that is required. And during the student teaching, they have to also pass the NTPA in order to finish the college program.
So, both?
Both, yes.
Any suggestions regarding retention?
For retention at Miles College?
Well, no, retention wants to graduate.
I think we do a pretty good job of preparing our students who, who are into the field of teaching. A concern is that many of them, for some reason, Atlanta seems to be a hotbed where they want to go. And Florida, for some reason, has become another hotbed. So, the trick is keeping them in the state of Alabama is a trick for us. So, that wonderful, I want, I do want to say, male enrollment in the initial education is steadily increasing. So, we really want to produce some very fine young men who are into the field of teaching. That is something that I really am part of trying to, because I think they provide the necessary role models in our schools. So, that is something that we are very proud of also.
Well, our superintendent and chair and leader fortunate to have many excellent teachers who are Miles College graduate. No difference to our Ms. Dr. Richardson, but it's a competitive environment here. And we're glad to have you there and what you do for us.
Thank you so, so very much.
Do you know what those states are offering that's different from Alabama that's causing our students to leave the state?
Oh, absolutely. Social, yeah.
And no thing that I will give them credit for, that is, Atlanta does come into the Birmingham area.
And approve.
And also, Florida comes in very heavy, and they do recruit.
Are they offering incentives?
Yes. Senate, you're 22, and you're in the state of Atlanta.
Packing my bags tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy lunch. We'll get it soon.
Number 10, do we have anyone here from the University of Mobile? Yeah, okay. Resolution to authorize review of an educator preparation program, University of Mobile.
And it's only one program? It's class leadership program?
To review it.
To review it, yes. So, they offer many other programs.
Yes.
I understand that. Offer many programs. This, all that's on the agenda today, that was review of their master's level instructional leadership program.
In your instructional leadership program, do you tackle the issues of like how to support your teachers?
Oh, definitely, yes. That's going to be, that's going to be in several courses. Because, you know, this is to review, yes.
Right, right, right.
You're going to do that.
Just asking him.
Right.
And we set together the recent presentation about teaching retention.
Right, I do remember that.
Individual from Tennessee.
Right.
Learned a lot and shared each other with each other. It was good to meet you there. You know you're interested in the dean's role.
And it's not on this, but I think all of us will be curious about your enrollment. First, bachelors as well as.
Okay, so undergraduate, if you started from the foundations of education class all the way up just through student teacher, it's about 90 students. And then our graduate is around 20 to 25. And we've seen a big increase in alternative masters program in the elementary and early childhood. I've talked to quite a few on the phone this summer of students who either want to come back. They got, maybe got a degree in something else, they want to come back, or they are, are new to the area and they wanted to start alternative masters. But we do have an increase in undergraduate and graduate, just traditional students too. So, enrollment has come up in the last couple of years. Yeah.
Thank you. Any suggestions on retention?
I think the salary increase has helped, will help. I know, I know a lot of teachers, you know, older teachers who are planning to stay in because of that salary increase. So, I think that's, that's a great incentive. And, you know, if it could even get better, I think that would help a lot too, you know, to bring that salary up a little bit more. I think that's going to help a lot.
Anyone else? Thank you so much.
Okay, I will say that we do have letters training, and they do get completely through the program and get certified before they graduate. And there's all of them.
She wanted you to know. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to all of our educator preparation programs.
No, I mean, there's only three other islands.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. I think we would want lunch first.
No, we, we are. We're going to do lunch. We will recess until two.
Two?
Twenty-five. Two twenty-five.
So, if you want to.
Want to do two thirty?
When we come back.
Hold on. We will recess until two thirty. Okay, now, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. I was going to just try to get that because the folks who are doing presentations, it's definitely make sure they get back.
Okay, two thirty, two thirty.
So, questions first and then really.
Yes, two thirty. Thank you all for staying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Matty, we're going to start without you.
Yes.
Oh, this is...
That's okay.
I was wondering if you might...
The Alabama State Board of Information Work Session is now reconvened. Dr. McCarthy, I think you have some questions?
14 minutes.
I do, I do. Hold on just a second. Okay. Okay. Teacher of the Year. Great program, awesome. Did all of our schools submit an application? Like, all the LEAs? I just want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to participate.
Yeah.
Where's my...
All the...
Like, did all of the LEAs...
All the schools did Teacher of the Year. Is Dr. Stigley down here? They just... I just left the two Teachers of the Year, and I think they're all up there having a conference, so...
Okay. Well, we can... I mean, you can get back to me, or I'll just write it down and send it in.
Yeah, so how we do it is that, you know, they start at school level, it goes to LEA, and then they go up to the 16th, five, let's see, 02 Beach District. I mean, I can't tell you that all 1,500 schools had a Teacher of the Year out. As soon as they did, they're not for sure.
Not necessarily, but all LEAs, that all the LEAs submitted a name.
As a former superintendent, I can tell you, they all had the opportunity.
Right, right, right. I would make sure that they all did.
That was the two-point question. You said, "Did they or did they have the opportunity?"
No, 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 I did not say opportunity.
I don't know if they did, but I know they had the opportunity.
Okay, well, I would like to see if they actually did it.
And let me say, the culture of the process, sometimes they don't. I mean, because you want to put someone forward that you think will actually win.
Right, right, but also, too, I want to make sure that it's not, like, I think, the one, Kimberly, who we have now, is, they have a situation where they can partner, you know, with somebody else, and so Auburn City Schools doesn't suffer so much if she's not in the classroom. But, and I think we talked about before, some schools, they can't afford to lose that teacher unit. They can't afford to have somebody chosen as the Teacher of the Year. And that's sad to me. I want all schools to be able to participate fully in this process, and if they have a candidate who is the legitimate Teacher of the Year, as voted on by that committee, you know, I'd like for that person to be chosen and to have that year as our ambassador.
I would say, I mean, this year's a perfect example. The Teacher of the Year is from one of the most challenged, difficult, high-poverty... I mean, there's not a thing you can lay on a school that would be a challenge that Washington-KA doesn't have. And, I mean, it's just thrilling that he's the Teacher of the Year.
But it's Jefferson County, though, right?
From...
From the city, yeah. Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
He's going to be a part of it. Okay, well, yes, you can just check.
I think where we're going with this, though, is, is there any monies available directly?
Right, we should put her in the budget.
Right, is there a teacher unit that can cover that?
I know, in Ms. Johnson's case, she co-teaches.
Right.
So on the days that she's got to be away, she has a co-teacher that can step in and manage, so...
I just don't want money to be a limitation on this. That's what I'm saying, and then if we find that it is, and I, you know, look at the data, but if we find that it is, then we address that.
Yeah.
And so first thing is find the information and see if it's a problem. If it's not a problem, we don't have to worry with it. But, so now, and then also, when does their term start? Does Kimberly, does she...
Kimberly had an abbreviated...
She had a...
Kimberly had an abbreviated nine-month term because of COVID, so this, it's my understanding, will be a full one-year.
Yeah, have a new Teacher of the Year today.
Today?
Yeah.
Okay, but she's still doing some work. Uh, she's going into Calhoun County this August. So that's just, that's wonderful. But, um, but I, so that's why I wasn't quite sure, you know.
Yeah, we're back on the May-to-May schedule.
Yeah, okay.
You know, we did May 2020, we had to do it virtual because everything had closed down. And then we, um, so that was a hard year on those folks because they didn't get to travel as much. There wasn't a national meeting and all that. Then, the last one, yeah, so 2122, we waited because we thought if we did it in August, maybe the virus, everything would be under control again, so we just delayed it to August, and that's why she had a shorter year. Of course, then we had the Delta variant, and it actually was worse in August than May. I don't, now, I don't know about the car, you know, Alabama does usually a 12-month lease on the car, so that may be letting her keep the car, and we just overlap for a while. But, I mean, she can certainly visit schools, you know, even after she's been Teacher of the Year. But he is the Teacher of the Year starting.
That's today.
When he gets the resolution.
Okay.
But to respond to your question one more time, having had a Teacher of the Year in a school system, the concept of being able to afford afford these relative terms, you know, you may be a wealthy school system, but you still have gotta replace the teacher unit. So if you're proposing that we consider a budgetary item for the state of Alabama to support the Teacher of the Year program by paying that payment for no matter whom it is, that's the concept to deal with, not whether the system can afford it or not. That's not the issue. Because when it happened in Athens, it wasn't a matter of whether we could afford it or not. We committed, and we did afford it, whether we could or not. And that's what everybody faces, no matter how wealthy your system is.
That would be a great, um.
See if the state of Alabama will fund it, which is where it.
We could put that in.
Include in our retention, uh, plan, as we were talking about retaining teachers, to know that a school system that has a Teacher of the Year or an alternate Teacher of the Year, who get one teacher unit for that year, would definitely be an incentive for them to encourage. And then, it says to the teacher, "We value you."
Value you.
And that teacher, you know, would then have the flexibility to coach, to mentor other teachers in areas that may be challenged, or, or just to, you know, just having the liberty to do. I think that would be something, I know, I think Linda, aren't you serving on the retention committee? That could be something that could be embedded in part of that process.
Yeah, and that's certainly something we could ask for in the budget process.
And then, another question I have was, um, we know that the summer reading camps will be starting soon, and we need the A-CAP reading scores to be able to determine which students qualify to be in those. Other, some school systems invite more people, but at least at a minimum, those students are invited. So when will be, we be able to see the A-CAP scores for reading and also for all subjects, all grades, from second to eighth, and then the ACT and the work keys? When will those scores be released?
I could answer the A-CAPS, the third, second, third grade, but now Ms. Martin probably.
Right, on Monday, Ms. Ziegler took, um, took part in a policy review committed with us for second and third grade reading, where we're looking to validate those scores. Um, and once that validation is finalized, we're expecting the LEAs to have their data loaded into the, um, review portal, hopefully by next week. Um, but we're going through an actual review, and then they, in turn, have to go and validate their assessment data before it rolls back over to us to be final. And we typically give the LEAs two weeks in order to do that. But being that they will have the data in their school districts, they're able to use it to make those instructional, uh, decisions for the reading camps. That's why, and also, to be clear, we only had 97%, which is good, of the second and third grade assessment data. These were the early testers, the early testers. 97% is what we were actually reviewing on this past Monday.
Well, that's 97% were early testers.
Yes, 97% of the early testers.
And wasn't it, should we wind up?
Yes.
Doesn't mean they scored better or worse.
Right, 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 right.
It was just the early testers.
So then we could actually see the test results or just have some type of analysis in July, in our July meeting?
Oh, uh, yeah, yeah, but, yeah.
State-level draft, state-level.
Yeah.
State-level.
That would be great.
Now, that'll be, there's a reading, there's a second and third grade reading, it's not the whole A-CAP. So the A-CAP, remember, there's, there's a section that has to be. We won't get all that back till August. But the reading test is all multiple choice, so that it can be turned around really fast. So, yeah, absolutely, we could look at the reading data for second, third grade in July, possibly even in June, maybe.
Could we see all but the writing part? 'Cause I'd like to see math, too.
No.
Was it, we're not looking at that.
The rest of it comes back later.
Yes.
Only the reading part comes out of May.
That's why we chose them, so they would get the data back faster.
For reading.
Reading, and then for everything.
We mentioned before that, but remember, this is that unusual year where we're doing some more studies. Um, after last year, that was just our COVID year, and then we were doing some comparison, information with this. So we are gonna have it earlier, but right now, we're trying to make certain that we have the reading score, so that we can go. Then we're moving forward with all the other assessment.
They had, had COVID, and we'd had two years of regular data, then we'd be on the, the regular cycle. And, and it will eventually come back earlier, except for the writing portions. But this is the, the standard-setting year, so it, it won't get all the rest of it till August.
I hate that because.
The reading, you'll get back early.
We, the intent was, well, one of the, the issues with ACT Aspire, the problem with it was it was so slow in getting the data to the school system, so that they knew where they were strong and weak, and then they could address with professional development in the summer where they were weak. And when they came back in August, they were ready to go, they could address their weaknesses, they were, you know, 100% ready to go. And so, it's like one more year of delay.
Well, the, but, yes.
I know, we can't help the pandemic, I know.
I would not have liked to have had a pandemic, but it, but, yeah, we are dealing with the fallout.
But will the schools get the raw score, so that they know in this, I mean, it may not be, we may not know proficiency comparative, all that sort of data, but if I were a superintendent, I would want the raw data. I would wanna know, how did I do this year compared with last year? Just to give me an indication if I'm moving in the right direction, right?
Understand they're already calling.
I bet they are, yeah, I'm being.
Yeah, we can't, you know, what's available, what's theirs, there. Um, I don't know about raw scores.
But if they have it in June, that's better than, I mean, we're gonna get it state-level in July, but what I've heard from superintendents, as long as they got it early enough in June, then they could really identify the kids that they really needed to, to do some intense work with early enough in the summer to impact that camp period, is that correct?
Reading, reading.
And, and they're gonna get that in May.
Yeah, they'll get it.
They should get it by May, I think.
She's speaking of the full A-CAP, probably.
The whole thing. So, so that, that was really just the one, the one, um, sort of pressing matter, was to get the reading portion as early as possible. And I, I'm assuming that that's still.
And we're turning that around, I mean, they'll get it next week, so they're gonna get it before school gets out. And remember that in, in the future, they'll get it, they could get it in earlier, because one of the things this year, is the second year in a row, we had to extend the test window to six weeks instead of three weeks, because, uh, when we were setting up the test window, a lot of them were still, some of them still had some virtual schools going in and out, and they wanted to be able to do social distancing in the testing room, which meant that to get the testing done, we had to extend the window to six weeks instead of three weeks. I'll keep our fingers crossed, if next year, we, if the standard settings finish this summer, next year is a normal year, and we can go to a three-week testing window, then the, the testing would be over by, I mean, much earlier, and we can hopefully get them turned around. I mean, I don't wanna promise it today, so I'm gonna write it down, Dr. McCarthy, but, you know, hopefully by around the first of May in the future, what superintendents have asked, everyone I've heard from has said, "Just get it to us by the last day of school." And we're gonna do that this year, but hopefully next year, we'll get it even earlier. Eventually, yes, they'll be able to get lots of data back earlier, but it's just not, we just, you know, and I, I know the pandemic has, it's just thrown everything off, but it just is what it is, we just gotta work through it and get back.
Well, when can we expect to get the whole, the, the A-CAP second grade through eighth grade scores by LEA, and also the ACT and work keys?
Who the, the state board is, LEA? Who told me? You mean the state board, 'cause the LEA should get it before us.
Oh, yes, they will.
So, are you asking when?
I'm, I'm asking when we, the state board.
Okay, 'cause.
We'll get that to you, Ms., Dr. McCarthy. Um, let me pull the assessment actual memo from DRC, and I don't wanna give you a date, and it's not that date. And also, as a reminder, we originally started this year off with one testing window for our reading assessment, and because, um, some LEAs were getting out early and wanted to go ahead and prepare, remember, we gave them two, um, we changed it midstream and gave them two testing windows, so that's why I said, "These were your early testers." So those who chose to take it early, and then we do have that pool of individuals that chose to take it during that late time. So we'll need to get that data in as well, but just those individuals that were getting out earlier and wanted to go ahead and take advantage of that.
Are you saying we're gonna release any data to anybody before it's validated by the LEA?
We don't, no.
So when she's talking about giving it to us, it will be validated.
Yes.
By the LEA first.
Yes, and that's why I want to get, um, my DRC memo date and share that, and then we will work from that date as to when we'll be able to give the presentation.
Right, because they get data, they don't have it yet, but they will get it unvalidated, it's not a public record. Once we give it to y'all, it becomes a public record, so we wanna make sure it's right, and the LEAs have signed off.
Right, no, and I agree, now, but I'm just trying to get an idea of when we'll get it.
I would say, well, I mean, she'll get you that, but hopefully August, I don't, but I, but there's a, the, the LEAs have to have a couple of weeks to do it, so, um, we typically, our September meetings, when we try to go through it, and I think we'd probably look at that again this year, the, the work session in September. They're obviously making instructional decisions, so they wanna see it earlier, but, but it's not gonna make, you know, that, for us, probably that's a good time. Um, you, ACT and work keys, I'm not sure when those come in.
We're expected for July, um, the second week in July, is when we're expected to have ACT data. And the full A-CAP, of the, that's why I said, "I wanted to get the memo," the tentative date was around the third week in June on for the A-CAP, but I can give the actual dates in that way.
And we did have, uh, we gave an extra ACT date this year, a late date. Some of them did not take it until spring, because, again, the pandemic. So normally, we administer that in fall, and some of them didn't administer it till late spring this year. And we'll eventually get back on a regular schedule, okay?
What happened with that technicality, or was a problem in some areas with the ACT in the assessment, um, administering? I just read about it in the newspaper, I didn't hear anything otherwise.
Yeah, um, the, I think the one you're talking about, 'cause the story appeared in the paper, was a, um, there, they had some emergency, I can't remember what it was, if the power went out, I think it was power failure during the test. And they were not able to complete the test at the right time, in fact, it invalidated some of the tests. They can, um, so I, I don't know the whole resolution on that, but it only affected a small number, but of course, it can affect the school's report card, because if some of their students get invalidated scores, and they can't show, show scores, and it may have been on the makeup date, so like, oh, that, this was the last opportunity.
Can you provide that information? I'd love to know the areas, because it does, since it's required, and it does, um, impact their.
Yeah, I know, I've talked to one superintendent, I think Mr. Mark, I've talked to one, but I, I think we actually have two situations where they had ACT problems, they were in different parts of the state, different issues, I don't, I'm talking off the top of my head, so, but we'll, we can get that for you, yeah.
And this is, I don't mean to open this back up again, but could we get, I've, I've heard anecdotal, a lot of, of teachers that have said they had turned in their retirement papers under the salary matrix, and, you know, and the answer might came out.
We don't have that this month.
Okay, you'll know the number that changed their mind.
Yeah, I've talked to RSA, so there are two things, one, we'll, so they're gonna be able to pull for me, um, and we shouldn't, we're gonna collect it through the middle of May, but by the end of the month, we'll just send it to you instead of waiting. But they'll have the number of people who turned in the retirement papers and rescinded them. The other number they can get is the normal retirement rate versus actual this year. So most people don't turn in their retirement papers till the first of May, and since it passed, um, earlier, there's a good chance that there were people who had intended to retire but never turned in their retirement papers. We know that some people have rescinded their retirement papers, in fact, we had some panicky people contacting the department about how to rescind their retirement, and so we actually sent some things out about, this is who you need to contact, how to rescind your retirement. So, yes, we'll get you some numbers on that. Um, again, I'm like you there, anecdotally, I hear, I mean, I've run into many people who say that they are, I've talked to several superintendents who say they have multiple teachers who are rescinding their retirement, um, and staying, but, but haven't seen any number numbers. So we're, we're a little anxious about seeing the numbers, too. The cost between that and the, the pay raise, if people do rescind their retirement, that obviously helps some. The bringing people back in, and I think Siobhan gave me, she sent me some numbers, I'm gonna pull together for you, they, that, she said 500 last month, just asked for their, their teaching certificate back, and I think it's been like 3,500 very recently. We, um, and then the teams, so the teams contracts have made a huge difference, rural superintendents tell us. Now, if you can't find somebody, you can't find somebody. But, again, I talked to one superintendent of, who's in a very rural, hard-to-fill area, and she said, "This is the first time she will have no math and science openings when school starts next year." And it's mostly because of teams, and I said, "Well, who are they?" Well, some, some have just decided not to retire, she's been able to recruit some people, this is a, I don't wanna give it up, but somebody on a border county, and so they've been able to pull people in from the neighboring state. And then the other one is that they just have been able to pull in some people that, alternative, you know, they weren't teachers, but it's such good money, they decided to become a teacher, get a team's contract. So, so those three things seem to be helping, 'cause teams is just math and science, it's just high school, middle school, so it's very limited. But we're gonna, we'll get you those numbers, 'cause I'm very excited about seeing those numbers myself. Um, I called and talked to RSA about them, I, maybe the first week of May or right before, and they asked me, they said, "Don't, if we pull them now, they're gonna be wrong, give us a couple more weeks, and we'll get you some really very good accurate data." So I'll show those as soon as we get them.
Great, and thank you so much for those letter stipends that went out, Bonnie, thank you. Um, and as, I, I know this is constantly updated, right, but, um, as, as soon as we can, and, and Bonnie, you may send it out and then say, "Okay, three weeks later, we've got new numbers, I need to update it." But I'd love to see a report of, that shows the percent of admin and K-3 teachers of the faculty, you know, of, of that population by LEA who are letter-strained. Okay, so just to be able to see, 'cause we wanna make sure that there's not pockets that are being overlooked, that aren't being letter, letter-strained. And so I think if we could see by LEA, it would, it would help us.
So, and one of the things that my staff is doing right now is, they've made lists of where we do have those pockets, so that we can initiate conversations with them to try to encourage that. So while I do not have the specific numbers on each of those, I have roundabout percentages as to what we have around with regard to those, um, those schools. Some of them are not taken yet right now. Some of them are not taken yet right now, and I am in a specific other thing.
Yeah, I just, it would be nice, again, you know, to have the data to be able, just to see. And like Dr. Mackey says, he likes those heat maps, you know, and so I think we do too, they're always helpful. Just, you know, at a glance, you can see, you know, if there, if there's some areas where there's some droughts.
Stacy is continuing to work with us so that we can try to get this information that would be built into our current house school system, where it would be easier to pull that data and you could see concretely what's going on.
Well, and I think the next step question needs to be fabulous that they're trained, but how are we following up on the implementation? So that's, I mean, that is critical mass, because you can be trained all you want to, but if you're not taking it and putting it into the classroom where we're gonna actually see results, it's, it's all moot. So we need that next step of information.
Well, and the admin training, now that we're providing stipends for principals as well, we're supporting those principals who, once they master this and see the value of it, then the hope is they will support it in their teachers.
I do think we'll have the administrators that will decide if they wanna do the elementary course because of the stipend incentive.
Exactly.
They've already gone through the administration, 6,000 authors that want, want that two-year opportunity instead of the big picture.
Exactly, so, so thank you for all your work with those stipends, I think they mean a lot. And then I had a question, and I don't know, Bonnie, if this is for you, or there it is for Dr. Mackey, but the reading spotlight schools, and this goes back to our retreats, but I've just, our retreat, but I postponed asking this question. There were some links for the reading spotlight schools. And let's see, one was on A-CAP reading deficiencies, and another showed numbers of schools actually implementing SFR. Could we see those reports? I don't ever remember seeing those reports.
We didn't see them because those links were internal, because we were still, we didn't just look at the data, I'm sorry, Bonnie, but because I made sure she get, because we have had our folks actually visiting those schools to see if what the data said matches what's going on in the classrooms. So that is why we did not provide that data, and in the phases, it kinda talked through where we would be. And so we'll be able to provide you with those schools, whether they're full support, limited, because we, you know, we had a mixture of them, but also what that specific criteria was and where that growth was and what we saw, because it's qualitative and quantitative. Exactly what Stig was saying about some schools, I mean, some schools, the data may have grown exponentially, but we wanna see, are they implementing the science of reading and the trainings they are receiving from letters, and so.
So will we get more information once you've had a chance to?
Yes, because we wanted to visit, and that will be part of, in June, we will be spotlighting those schools, that's why we had a resolution. We didn't have all of the names yet, because again, our visits were still occurring, we had, because the rubric also was another internal link that we'll be able to give you all once we get done visiting. But all, so that we didn't just haphazardly hit schools.
Y'all the spotlight schools?
Yes.
I don't, are y'all still on board with questions?
That was a board question from the retreat, from a long time ago, so I apologize for waiting so long.
So the spotlight schools, yeah, they did a very good job. I actually got to go in, spend maybe an hour watching them, and but I think that Elizabeth just said that, that it's, it's about making sure, so we got, we don't want mass schools. So you can have schools that score really well, but they are not necessarily implementing the science of reading, doing the things we want. So we don't want people to go look at those schools and think, oh, this is the way to do it, and they take it back, and those are not replicable practices. They're scoring high because they're, have a different population, maybe. So they did actual walkthroughs, and that was fascinating to see our reading specialists, our reading coaches talking about what they saw when they walked through a school, the positives and the negatives, what they learned. And Bonnie, if there were, I don't know how many there are, but if there were 20 schools, there were 20 very different reports, the things they saw, I mean, they're common themes about science reading, or, you know, are they seeing the right kind of practices? But the way they laid it out in school, it's just very, I'm sorry, Bonnie, tell us.
I agree with you. I think this is one of the things that's so exciting about this, and it goes to what you were saying earlier, Stephanie Bell, with regard to the visits into the schools and seeing model situations. And so there are gonna be very different schools that have very different things going on, but they all have something in common, which is that aspect of the science of reading, something that they're, you know, part of it or all of it, that they're doing really, really well, that we can come in and focus and say, this has made a really big difference in your school, and this has the opportunity to impact somebody else's school.
Yeah, so those are coming next month, we'll have the holiest, right?
Yes, I do want y'all to see them and have that resolution, because they will, at Mega, provide some intro, general overview, because they will be hosting visits for the next school year. So our goal, now it could all blow up next year, but we want to have some that every year that we recognize, and it may be some of the same ones if they keep, but that will be one of the things we talk through with them for, is that they will be, will support with our regional folks, but, and I've got some work to do to show off, because we should be able, we will be able, in all eight of your board districts, they're, we're trying to take away not the excuse, but the fear of not, well, it's this school, or it's this population, or it's this location. That's why it was so important to visit and make sure that we included a variety of parameters in that rubric so that no matter where I am, I can go see another school with some similarities. It was, I will say, the work that she did, and yes, it's amazing.
Thank you. Still on reading. Bonnie, I'm so glad you're here. I've learned now that it's COUT, not call, so I'll try to remember that. But the COUT memo went out, Dr. Mackey, you sent it out not too long ago, with the scholarship for teachers to apply to get into that. Did we have good participation?
We had several that attended the information session. The ones that have signed up, we did not have a high number of individuals that have signed up. And when we started digging in to find out why, there's a master's requirement that now goes with the COUT. And I think that, that may be one of the deterrents that's happening, I think there are some people who are interested. So we've been talking internally about exploring some possibilities of how we might can, you know, work through that in some form or capacity.
And another thing that came up when I met with the COUT class surreptitiously, I didn't intend to, I walked into their class in the building, one of the things they asked about was in the future, so this would be a budget request. So there's also something called CELP, with a P, if you don't know what that is. So CELP is a practitioner, whereas the T is a therapist. Most people go through CELP on their way to being a COUT, because it's, it's fewer hours. So, so in other words, they build on each other, and what they, I mean, almost, they, when I asked them, what would it, what's something we could do that would make this program better, they said, give a stipend for CELP with a P. And because it is, you do all the coursework to get to CELP, but you do it, but you can get it before you get all of the therapy hours. One of the problems is they have to have, they have to truly do therapy with children with reading disabilities. And most of them are teachers, and they can only do that therapy after school or before school, because they're full-time teachers, and they have to get in hundreds of therapy hours, right, it's hundreds of hours. And so if you can't do them during school, which a couple of them said they were able to get an intervention class and do it during school, but almost none of them could. So they're doing an hour before school, an hour after school, and they gotta do like 600 hours. So they said, if you could give us a COUT stipend, so like we could get to pick a number out of the air, but say $5,000 for COUT, and then 7,500 for a COUT with a T, then that would help them get some money along the way. I mean, that was their number one request. And so the head of the budget, but that's on my list for us to talk about in August when we have our budget discussion. If the retreat is, would the board be willing to ask the legislature for that? It'd be, I mean, you're gonna be talking about in the hundreds of thousands, not multi-millions of dollars. But that might also help. There is, as Ms. Short mentioned, now, to even start the process, you have to have a master's degree. That did not used to be true, and so that also limits the people who can obviously get in. So, and some of them were, are also in national boards, and you just can't do it all at one time. So, so anyway, that could be part of our issue, but, but keep that in the back of your mind, that, and you may talk to some of these folks and ask them how they feel about it, but trying to do a kind of a midterm stipend and then a bigger stipend at the end, might be a way to send more people to go through the process, because they, as they related it to me, some of them are having to, I mean, they're just, they're, like, like they're having to hire babysitters, to be honest with you. That was the biggest complaint. They're having to do therapy, so they're having to hire a sitter or pay for after-school care or something for their children, so they can do therapy, and that's costing them money. And that's why they said, if you could just give us a stipend along the way to help pay for that, so.
Is our August retreat scheduled?
It is, yes, sir. I think it's the 26th. It's on the board calendar that we adopted in December, but I think it's the 26th.
It's Friday, the 26th?
If it's a Friday, I don't think that's right, because I'm pretty sure it was a Wednesday. It's a Wednesday, so maybe the 24th, but.
But, well, thank you, Bonnie. I mean, I appreciate you digging into that and finding out what some of the issues were and talking to them, because we need these COUTs or COUTs, you know, in, in our schools, because they have so much knowledge about the science of reading and how to help their schools and their educators to implement it and, and help children who may be struggling readers and may have dyslexia. And so I'm very supportive of this program, but I appreciate you digging into it and seeing, because, you know, I was hoping you'd come back and say, no, there were 500 people, you know, that applied for 30 spots or something, so, but thank you.
We actually have a university program that also reached out to us with regard to an opportunity. And so, you know, I'd love to be able to say, well, we're filled up, but you can go to this university where you can work towards it.
Could we ever, one of our universities maybe think about not looking at any one, but just, you know, like a dual, could you do a master's and a COUT program at the same time? No, you have to have a master's first. Okay, never mind, bad idea, sorry, that didn't work. But I'm just trying to think of some innovative way to get more in our state. Okay, the Barkstall Institute, a couple of people mentioned that in their discussion with the.
Nice to hear that they thought it was positive.
They thought it was positive, and so I know they got their contract extended. It was to end in March and got extended a little bit longer. And the last report, I think Elizabeth, it was you, like maybe through Chuck, is an answer to one of board questions, the emails, that they would report to us in June.
Yeah, and I think we have, we have an internal meeting then, June 2nd, June 2nd, because I've scheduled the day to be with them, so, and then we'll have the board meeting, I guess, maybe the next week. But they are meeting, okay, Bonnie, tell us, are the deans coming that day? Aren't they coming themselves?
That would want the deans to also be able to come so that they can hear the state report, and then they will provide their individual reports. And then I've also requested for the, for them to.
So Bonnie, you're saying when they come, they're gonna give an overall state report, and then later give each institution their individual, at a later date?
So we will, we will see all of it this?
In June.
In June.
The state.
Will we see the individual schools?
I don't know that you're getting the individual schools prior to the schools getting them. I think they're just giving a overall picture, but I could be wrong.
We'll ask the Board stuff, but they'll be here in June. That'll be good discussion.
It'd be great discussion, and let, in the, I just, when we came out of our retreat, it was so positive with the relationship with the legislature. Would it be appropriate to invite, especially those in the education arena with the legislature, to attend when Barkstall presents, or is that not appropriate for you?
I met with a number of senators recently. I met with some of those who attended our retreat. And as an active member of one of the political parties, I'm telling you, I've got more positive comments. Mr. Daniels is particularly complimentary, and asked that when we began to schedule our retreat, if we wanna really do what we say we do, that's increase our relationship with them, then we scheduled it along with them. Because the senators were regretful that we had our retreat at the same time that some of them had a caucus. And they blamed me, us, for that conflict. And I told them, with every ounce that I have capabilities, that part of our retreat, we be dedicated to what we say we wanna do, and that's involving them. Particularly if we're gonna be involved in budget, you might as well, if you want money, you better talk with the person that has the checkbook. And so I think that we as a board would be remiss if we didn't learn from the positive aspect of having those people invited and plan our retreat, that's why I asked for the date, to let them start knowing, particularly the leaders in the parties, that we're gonna have that, and not only have it as a second thought, have it as part of our initial planning, starting now to involve them. Because when I met with those eight senators, who were all the leaders and leaders of the committees, that's something that they consider important.
Well, in that spirit of good relationships, should we invite them?
Not only spirit, but an obligation. I don't think it's a spirit, I think it's an obligation.
Right, but next month, not, I mean, the retreat, yes, but next month.
They can't, they can't show, you gotta get more lead time than that. If you want them to come, you have to be a little bit more understanding of their, some of them actually have other jobs.
Some of them I have heard from, a couple cannot come next month because they've got, they've got vacations planned. I think some are gonna watch it, try to watch it, but yeah, they're interested in it.
Good, good, well, thank you.
And remember, it is a two-way street, because in the past, and I always refer to, they have actually reached out to us as well. So there has been that connection where it's not just coming to our meetings, but they invited us to their meetings, and
That's what they told me, too, you're right.
And I think that's crucial, that we remind them.
Yeah, I'll, I don't, I won't work on it.
Thank you, okay. Brandon, guess what? Question for you. Link for implementation certification, can you give me a status update?
No.
You're not supposed to say that.
Well, I mean, ultimately, it's not, it's really not my project. So I don't, I don't want to throw much more bust on that one, but Ms. Mark, I know the updates on it. I mean, it's the case study with your work on the supercomputer to do that. But, I mean, I'm familiar with it because of the work that I did with Link before I came here. I actually did, importantly, operate off of it.
Right.
So Ms. Mark.
Right, it's okay, it's no problem. It is a certification project, and the piece that we've been working to actually finalize is, you know, it went live with the, the one where we're transferring our information in from other states where you're able to transfer your certificate. That actually went live, and we've been doing some enhancements with Alabama Supercomputer, as well as our IT department. They ran into some glitches with personable identifiable information. We're trying to upload forms to keep the applicant from having to scan in and still email to us. Supercomputer cannot house that information, that was not a part of the agreement, it was to be housed here at the. It was to be housed here at the department. So, we're working on some technical details. And I think I have a meeting scheduled with Dave for next week, I can't remember when, to discuss how we can house that.
I understand you.
Dave Pope, I'm sorry, our IT lead, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, we're having conversations with that. And it's just that personable identifiable information, there are several documents that is required to be uploaded, that has information that supercomputer would house, and that was not the agreement. So, now, it was actually, when we changed directions in that project, let me give you a little history with it. Originally, when we started working through that whole certification process, it was supposed to be done up here. And in the middle of that, maybe in July, there were some concerns with how it was designed. So, we did a pivot, I want to say in September, and just asked supercomputer to go ahead and help us push it out and house it on their system. They will be the host of it. But in doing that, they did not realize that there were added forms that had personable identifiable information that they were not equipped to store. So, now they're trying to figure, how can we put those in this environment and still maintain that? Because right now, you have them doing kind of a, a two, part of it is online and part of it is them submitting forms to us. And we want to get rid of that piece.
So that we all.
Exactly. Right now, there is nowhere to store that.
Do we have an expected completion date?
Yesterday. I mean, I say that, I mean, honestly, we're really pushing forward. There are some things that's in the cloud world that I don't understand, why we can't house it in certain places. But hopefully, next week, what we'll do, we'll add that question within the information that Mr. Martin will send out. And once we meet with them, I'll give you that update. I don't want to promise a date that that's going to live here, and it's not the date that our IT partners can come up with.
I appreciate it, because that has been, as you know, a headache for many years.
Reciprocity, I went, I had a brain freeze. Reciprocity, that application was totally loaded. They're able to complete it and check all of that. I love it, but they have to come back and scan all of the forms that are necessary into the system, and then we have to manually assign it to our specialists that work in that world in order to match those two. So, we're trying to eliminate that piece. And it's all because of that personable identifiable information that we can't upload.
Well, we support you.
Yes.
In doing this, and, and just can't wait for that project to be completed.
I can't wait. I'm telling you. About to give you an answer, make it done.
No, he passed.
It is okay, we're working really hard, trying to get that. That has just been that IT obstacle that we're trying to work through. And it was just an unexpected consequence of switching modes of how we were going to do that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Dr. McCarty, before you leave here, I'm sorry. In line with Lingfrog, I know you mentioned reciprocity and application process. Okay, with Lingfrog, it's supposed to help us streamline our processes for certification. Beyond those two items of reciprocity and applications, what else have we gained by going through?
It was an overview of the entire process. Some of it was our staffing, how we were actually handling situations, fingerprinting. It did an overall of the entire certification process. Some of those things that were in there, we've already addressed. The big problem item was getting the certification process online. That was the huge lift for it, but some of the things have already been addressed.
So, if we were to check off everything we were to have gotten from the contract, we just about got everything itself?
Yes, ma'am. Very close to it. And this is the hardest one, this is the biggest lift of it. This piece here is the biggest lift. So, even though we would check everything off to say that perhaps ninety percent of it was complete, that ten percent was the biggest lift. The other things were not as hard to go in and push forward with. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the fingerprints, just know it's, it's related, because we've had a, some issue with fingerprints, but it's because, of course, we don't do that, Alea does fingerprints. And they've had some, they've changed vendors, and they've changed processes. And so, we, we have some issues with getting fingerprints back. We had some. I think it's been solved now, some of you may have heard that, I know some of you did. Because they, they changed vendors, there was a problem in between. But that seems to be better, it had, but there's now, there's, there's a, there's less capability than there used to be. And, and it's because of some change, I don't want to try to explain it, Jason, he could explain, but he might get too deep. But there's some legal issues now. They cannot provide us some of the information they used to provide us. Now, we still know, we run the fingerprints, if somebody has an either ABI or FBI, if they've been arrested, we have a problem. But there's a piece, an extra piece we used to get, that we don't get anymore. And so, we're, we're trying to work through a process with them, but they're just not, they're not legally allowed to give that to us anymore. It's a federal change. So, we're, so some of our districts are not getting as much documentation as they used to get. We're, and possibly also looking at going to more high-tech scans. You know, we use the cards, we ink your fingers, and they are more, they are looking at possibly going to, you know, it's a digital scanner that can scan your hands. So, we'll look at that. But all of that plays into this, because every time we make a change, that's been one of the issues, Ms. Martin, I, I ask that question to her all the time, too. Every time there's a change, then it affects our online certification portal. So, we're trying to, we're very close.
And Dr. Mackey, if I may, one added piece to that. When the project was originally started with the vendor, there's always a scope of work done. And when you do a scope of work and you're working with the vendor, and as just as Dr. Mackey indicated, you make a change, a group get together, and we decide, well, we want to add this, or we want to do this, that's a revision to the scope of work with the vendor, which they have to go back and do another plan. And so, those are the types of things that we are running into, and that's what happened with the hosting. So, I mean, it's just.
Change orders are expensive, whether it's building a house or building a computer.
And that's what they're called, change orders.
Much more expensive.
Yes, and that's what we've been, each time we have a new idea, we, we test it. I almost told certification, don't test no more. Because each time they test, if they find something that, or they have gone to a conference, and there's another great idea, and it's awesome, oh, we wanted to do this, that's a change order. So, and it, it's good, it's really good, because at the end of the day, we want a product that works great for Alabama. So, it's good to get those ideas in, but when you're working with a vendor, it is a change. And they want to, they do a whole new timeline for you.
And they know you want to change, and they can charge you more.
Yes.
And they do, I mean, as I was running the business, I charge you a lot for a change order.
Yes.
Okay, and, and just, I think, two quick questions, but Student Advisory Council, at one time, I think you were gonna form a Student Advisory Council. And I think, I mean, everyone, we have students come in and speak, it's just so joyful and so enlightening to have them and hear them talk about their, you know, and even the side of our conversations. But do you plan to get that started again?
Well, we did, yeah, we actually did start one. We met twice, I think, with them, Chuck. But it's kind of been hard to, yeah, we, it's, it didn't work out to be as big as what we were hoping. So, we think we're gonna back up and go a different way and let our, because we have such great student organizations here, through, especially through Career Tech, Future Teachers, FBLA, and let, try to get them to help organize a statewide effort. What we had before, I mean, they were good, they were great students, we enjoyed the meetings with them, they gave us some really good ideas. But they, they only came from very kind of limited pockets in the state. So, we didn't feel like we were getting that wide, diverse, even one of their recommendations was to do something different that would be wider and more diverse. But we had two meetings with them this year, they were very good meetings, positive. Some of them had been remote, had been remote learners mostly, they're all hospital students, obviously. A lot of them are graduating this year. And some of them had been in class, but the main issues they wanted to talk about, I can tell you, were, were mental health issues, those kinds of things, those were the issues that were heavy on their minds.
Well, if we could, if you form it again, in whatever capacity, even if it was digital, I'd love for them to talk to the board. I mean, I learned, it's so refreshing to hear their perspectives and, and to have them present at, at some point during the year. I think would be positive.
Student, the student advisory and the teachers, using our teachers of the year.
Yes.
You know, we've been able to meet with them this year, the Teacher Advisory Committee, Megan, extremely helpful during the, as we've talked about, mostly recovery from the pandemic. They've helped us to draw those issues, time to talk through it. Now, we'll have a new group, so we'll meet with this new one. We'll give them a couple of weeks probably to get out of school, and then we'll, we'll have some digital meetings with them. We found it's just nearly impossible to do in-person meetings. They have to come from so far, they're teaching, like last night, you know, they're, most, most of them drove down last night, and they were back in the classroom today. So, a digital meeting in the afternoon seems to work best for them. But we'll keep that, that's a good idea.
But, and, and last question, the school improvement reports, are they, and I'm not exactly sure, is this, the school improvement report, so these are at the LEA level, are they done every year? They are done every year, and are they posted on their websites?
There is not a requirement, it is recommended that they post them. And most of them, we've had some requests from various individuals for them, and the ones that they've asked for, they were posted on their site, but there is nothing that requires them as far as a law. But we recommend that, you know, typically, what you say is that their improvement plan should be housed in their school or in their central office, so that as people come in, they request to see them, they can. But now with technology, we encourage them in all of our meetings for them to post them on their site for transparency.
I just, in talking with some local school board members, they weren't, some of them were not aware of these. And so, I, that's why I just wondered, where, where do they get access to these? And I didn't know if it was, like you said, recommended, that they post it on the website.
Strongly recommended.
Unless the school board member wasn't aware of the existence of the school improvement plan.
They should be requiring those sort of.
Yes.
Is there any reason why we couldn't require that, just the board doesn't have to be in law?
No, I think it's a great.
I mean, why couldn't we require posting it?
I would think AASB would want to step in there and help those local boards understand that they need to make that request at the board table. But that's our job, is to require it. I mean, that's one thing we can do, so y'all do them.
Well, and that's why I want to make sure, because I thought, well, maybe I misunderstood, and they don't have to do them every year. So, I want to get clarity on that.
They do it.
Like what Ms. West said, I thought that double A S B in training their board members, let the board, that's why I said, you mean the board members weren't aware of it? That's not our responsibility for board members to know everything, we set requirements along. But I would think the double A S B and, and part of what they do in training board members.
But we don't.
When I tend board members, I let them know that. I don't, I never encountered a board member that was, didn't understand, maybe it was my different area, that didn't understand that there was a school improvement program, especially superintendent worked for them or was elected.
Well, that would be a good thing for their training, but why don't we just require the posting of it? And that would be a natural progression for the double A S B training that's required by law, so.
And not only the school boards, but community should.
Everybody, that's what I'm a little bit concerned about.
I have the community members and parents that want to see it, so, yeah.
It's public knowledge.
It needs to be transcribed.
Everything about it.
That's right.
But we have something we can do, we can require the posting.
Yeah. How do we get that?
Well, I just, I, at first wanted to get clarity, I wasn't sure that they did it every year, so.
Oh, yeah.
Because you're looking at, you're not going to change totally, but you go in and you do your updates based on your new data, based on enrollment, demographic, assessment data, everything that's going, sometimes schools configurations change. So, you go in and you do updates to that, you bring your data team back together. And if your title wants to, you're doing it anyway with your plan, and you go through the approval processes and all of that. And you took, you found that loaded in your EDAP system anyway, but you do just have a different version of it that's posted. And those are public.
So, is there a problem with trying to put together, legal putting together administrative coaching, so that we can just make it a mandatory part of, and then leave it to the training part of it for the local board member? But I'm, I'm with the others, I think it should be there, I think it should be mandatory, and that's something we can do, just require the posting on the LEA websites. I don't know of a school system that doesn't have one, there may be one, I just don't know.
A website?
They have a website, yeah. I mean, it's, that would be an easy thing to do.
So, their website's unsophisticated.
We'll look at it, see what one we need.
You're good.
Already did mine.
You. Not just, you can leave some questions. Dr. Rose.
She wants me to work on the answer.
Right.
I understand.
You, you understood, we're through with that one, okay, yes. You have me.
No, there was a comment, I said, not every school system has a sophisticated enough website to post data like that. So, if they don't, what are they gonna pay for?
Well, I mean, it's not that hard, I have brothers who can put together websites, like, you can go in.
You have brothers that may be smarter than every school system out there.
No, I don't think so, I think that's.
Okay, okay, all right, okay, thank you, all right. Do you have a comment?
Well, I'm not here yet. Just, it was, I noticed Ms. Royster was here, and I was the one that asked for a Power School update last month. So, I, I've held it, but may we have one? Thirty seconds. So, I.
Here it comes. Ten seconds left.
No, no.
She's got, yeah, she's ready to go with that.
No, she won.
Let me, let me answer it. So, Dr. McCarty's question, if you'll look back, one more, we'll, we'll resend it to y'all. But on the superintendent memo that went out May fourth, to suit, to the, you know, county superintendent's, hey, do you have to dig, and I know it's long, but the timeline for the data review is on there. So, the work keys data, the districts, set to get it May ninth, so they should have it now. And they have to review and confirm it by May twenty-third, and so, I won't read them all. But it's in there, and we'll just bring it back to the top of your box.
Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And it has the reading dates on the first page.
Yeah, it's got all those dates in there, so.
Okay, all right, Ms. Martin.
Go. Good afternoon, my thirty seconds are counted right now. But, no, on last month, on last month, I was requested to get a Power School update. And of course, Stacy has been working with us to make certain that we had the necessary district and school level support. Power School started off with a migration that took place last year on June eighteenth. And even though there were challenges, it was a success, and we were able to have a successful August go live. And through that process, we learned that our districts needed additional support. There were some struggles, because their, Power School is very unique, and it requires individuals with a lot of technological skills, a lot of that, that I don't go in there and do. So, as a result, with everything that was going on with the districts, we wanted to make certain that as a department, we provided them the level of support that they needed to navigate this new tool. And so, we reached out, and we were able to recruit Stacy to come onboard. And from there, her primary job, we keep her out of the IT world, is to support districts and schools with all of their needs as it relates to Power School. So, Stacy, we just have a couple slides that we want to go over, just to share with you the amount of professional development, resources, office hours, that we have been providing to districts within the last four months.
So, since coming onboard here at the State Department, this is just some analytics of my WebEx account that's personally stood up here at the State Department to show you that I've had over eight thousand meeting minutes with districts since January. I hold weekly office hours every Tuesday and Thursday. It's funny, because I set them for one hour, and they usually go into two, it goes into lunch and learns. And so, as long as they're asking questions, I'm gonna give them answers. My background is a teacher, and so, I'm there to facilitate support and help, and I do that in this role here to all of the districts. I do open office hours, where they can just ask any topic they want. I do dedicated training webinars. In fact, we have one tomorrow on proper enrollment and withdrawal procedures that have over six hundred people registered. I have another one on Monday on how to retain, promote, and graduate students in Power School that again has over six hundred people registered. The highest meeting I've had so far actually was held in February with six hundred and seventy-one participants when we talked about discipline. So, they're, they're neat. And when you get that kind of a audience on a WebEx, you can tell they're hungry for knowledge. And they're very curious at what all this program can do, because when you get the original training on Power School, it's, it's the. bare basics of making sure you can function with it. But it's got a lot of power in it. That's why it's in the name. And so taking them above and beyond and showing them the true capabilities, it's like when you get your first new version of your cell phone and you, you know how to navigate, but then you're like, oh, it's got this little feature and you go through it. Same thing here. So we've spent lots of meetings, lots of hours talking with them. I've developed quite a bit of documentation that I send out. Every Monday morning at seven o'clock on the dot, they get a newsletter just like this that is full of information. And I make sure to include information on all five of the Power School products that we have purchased, so that everybody in every position in the LEA gets some level of support. If there's any updates inserted, if there's new fields that have been embedded in there, we let them know about it. I give them ways to easily import data, so that we're not doing this one-off keying in of individual students. Because when you're, you know, Jefferson and Mobile with thirty or fifty thousand kids, you can't hand touch kids anymore. We're beyond that. Technology is in the, in the point where it's working for us now instead of us working for it through these updates. I have repository of video tutorials. Every tutorial webinar that I do, I record because I understand what it's like to be in the district and you can't always sit in front of that computer for that hour, but yet you really need that information. I record every one of them. I have them in a OneDrive account that's open to the district so that they can go back. I can see analytics and see that they're viewed multiple times. I do very detailed documentation, that picture on the right-hand corner, for everything that they have to do in Power School, I'm doing that level of guidance to them. Screenshots with arrows drawn to say, click here. Everybody is not technology. I had a, for those of you who know my background, I was the district technology coordinator and up like before I came here. And Ms. Janet Smith was a Latin teacher who, when she needed help with the computer, would take her piece of paper and draw the computer screen and it like went off. And from that moment on, any type of documentation I had given to anyone has always looked like that. So that whether you are up here with technology or down here, you'll be able to pull off what you need to do. So I'm going through and documenting everything that our districts have to do when it comes to Power School at a level beyond what Power School could ever think about offering. So all of that is being built and done on a day-to-day basis, so that I can support them in the best way possible.
Do you sleep? I was about to say.
No, she doesn't.
I love my job. I love, again, it's that teacher in me. And so I cannot stand to see anyone struggle with anything. If I can help in some way, I'm going to jump in there and do it. And the districts are like family. When we're on those webinars together, it's like having a family reunion and a conversation and we just go through. And so they know that I'm an advocate for them and they know that if there's something that we have to do, we're going to do it. But I'm going to find the most efficient way possible and not leave them out there struggling to figure it out on their own.
Well, I'm sorry, you.
And also, you got Stacy was one of our pilot districts.
Yes.
So she was one of our pilot districts that was able to test our products and go through and make certain things were set up for Alabama. And also, it does not mean that our districts are not doing what they need to do with that many people joining on. Let us remember that last year, when we did scheduling and we did a lot of things, it was with the assistance of an implementation specialist from Power School. So now they're turned loose. So this is our state-level implementation person to go back and support.
And I plan on handholding them through everything as we, we're about to start closing down schools next week. And so as we go through every step of any big thing next year, there will be live assistance. When it's time to, all right, let's register our kindergartners, there will be open office hours and we can go through it together. When they get ready to stay in their schedule, upstore grades for the first time, it doesn't matter if you're a pro or you're a novice. I will be there in front of them to walk them through so they don't have to do it on their own.
So we shouldn't feel guilty about sending people to talk.
No, ma'am, he sent them right on.
No, I think, and I know truly you are a blessing. And your Christmas and everything, birthday, everything wrapped up. Because that's a gift. People know, we all know how many contacts we have received.
And becoming less and less so now.
Yes, and that's, that explains it.
Now we know why.
Yes.
We just need to put your little face up there.
Well, I mean, it warmed my heart when I talked to a counselor and I just, they're able to breathe a sigh of relief because they just want to do their job right now. I want to make sure that they're not, I can't tell you how many GPA setups I have confirmed and went over, because I want to make sure they're naming the right Val and Sal and that colleges are getting the right ones for these scholarships.
Thank you. Dr. Chesna, do you have a question, Dr. Chesna?
Do. For some reason, I've lost my voice. Going back to the teacher shortage, want to add another question to that. If we could do a survey, so that we can survey every superintendent and every dean of teacher education. Because I know we had a sampling with the teacher task force, but I would love to really see how everybody feels about what we're doing. And it's always good to get input. So if we could do some type of survey and you have the computer geniuses all over, so that we can really see. Because I'm hearing one thing and I'm seeing another. And surveys will only validate how people feel. And it's good to get input from everybody.
They're anonymous, I saw.
Anonymous, yep.
I think it'll point out whether they're a superintendent or dean or whatever.
We have performance manager analytics that's set up. They are accessing that daily. There's also a lot of analytics that are built natively in the CIST, where it has progression charts. Our data's been loaded in here and so, yeah.
So since we've got that capability now right there in the classroom for them to see in real time how their students are performing, are you able to see who's actually using that and not using it, so that we can make sure they under, that those teachers understand what a terrific tool they have and that we've provided for them?
Power School has those kind of analytics reports for us, because we get weekly ones on Schoology now to see how the implementation is going and how many law events have been. So we would just need to request it of them, but I know it exists.
It goes back to something I say a lot, which is we are doing a lot. And we can provide the most wonderful programs and products and opportunities, but unless they're taking, unless people take advantage of them, we cannot promise results. So I think it's very important that if we put this at the teacher's fingertips in the classroom, that he or she can see in real time how each student is performing. We need to know that they're using it. I mean, that's how we hold ourselves accountable. So I would really like to know that at some point.
Globally, globally, obviously.
Yes. Ziggle, you were saying something about the survey you wanted.
No, I just think that's a great idea. But are you going to, are you going to sort of set forth which questions you wish to be asked on the survey?
You're reading my mind.
I know. I'm getting, you know, the birthday girl, you're, I'm feeling it, girl.
I'll call it, sure.
I certainly think it would have that analytical data, not just how many, but what the total enrollment is and what your, what is the level of problems that you have. I'd know that you would include that.
Well, and I'm sure if anybody has a question to be added, they can go through you.
Stacy, because I don't know that Power School can do this, so I'll ask, because every.
It's got the power.
I hear a lot of concerns with scheduling. It's very difficult to schedule. I've had some people say it's almost an art, how you do the schedules. Can Power School, it can do scheduling?
It can. And and master scheduling is not just a technology item, because you have to understand school culture to be able to do a great master schedule.
That's right.
I've been in one of those very unique positions where I came from the classroom to technology director who managed the data, but I also assisted with those master schedules. So I actually built the master schedule and assisted with that and up like it, because I said, we're just going to go all in. So we allow, we stood up our student screens. The kids logged into Power School, they input their requests. So a tenth grader popped up a screen and it said, for English, here are the classes that you can choose. Very similar to how they're registering for college nowadays. And so those requests went immediately in, so that took a load off of the counselors having to hand enter in. Now granted, some districts, those counselors still like to hand enter those requests and perfectly fine because there's checks and balances, because if kids will request something they probably shouldn't. But going through that, it'll load that. You put the constraints on what you want the teachers to do. It can build it from scratch. It even has a really neat feature called a visual scheduler. So for anyone who's been in the districts before, remember the old school days of putting sticky notes over the walls? And then it has that in there. It's a drag and drop of the sections. So there are a lot of different options inside.
Type A personality.
And it even color codes it by the period. Look, you're talking, I'll tell you, statistics person who, who did all of that and color coded. That was what I taught was statistics. So all of this kind of thing, it's a matter of that. But yes, you can have some real fun with the, the master schedule and that. And we, you know, every year when districts create their schedule, they go into it with a preconceived notion of, well, I think AP English really needs to be here because I don't want it to conflict with, you know, football or this or that. And we took our hands off of it the first time and said, all right, let it show me where it, it will best put all of the requests. And it put courses in places we had never thought of before, because we just didn't think it would fit, even though we thought we knew our school culture the best. And so we got some unique runs and you even have the opportunity to run it multiple times. So if you don't like it or you find out last minute this teacher is quitting and you need to, you know, I no longer have a net working teacher, now I'm going to have a culinary teacher or something like that. You can make those changes on the fly and rerun it until you're happy.
That is great.
It's, it's got a lot of power. But again, it's one of those things where they might have had to dig in to learn, you know, something else and not have gotten that far in it yet, but they'll be coming soon that they'll have.
I'm going to ask you a little bit of a different question. What can you do to help us answer the public perception that we're fifty-second in the nation in our performance? Because you and I know that that's not true. And I can assert that that's not true. And I get some of them, get asked that all the time. And I am in district age where I know it's not true, and I know it's not true overall. You try to explain the test base that that report is kind of, the press is here. So how, what can we do using your domain, your securities, your data collection, to put out data to validate our real performance level?
It would really depend on the level of data that you really want to put inside of Power School. How far do you want to go? Can this program handle going down to the standards level where you can cross-reference it against some assignments and it give you that breakdown? It absolutely can. That was one of my passion projects that I was working on before I left the district, because I think until we start looking at those individual pieces to see that our kids are performing way better than what we get as this overarching grade, we, we won't ever be able to portray something other than that. So.
So I'm saying, I'm at, I guess I'm asking, because I can't task, because you work for him, but asking you to do something, to look at what is a real problem. You talk about teacher retention, teacher recruitment, position. The reality is, the public perception is that we are fifty-second. And that's, and I don't have the data, except to say, I know what the NASB test and I don't believe it. Trust me, but they don't trust me, because it's self-serving. But what can you do to help us with validity and data to assert that? So that the newspapers and others who cover us can show that we're not just self-serving in our presentation.
I definitely will. I will do again and see what all we can gather together, because I'm on the same belief of you, is we have a lot, a lot more going on in Alabama than what a lot of people realize.
And I think out of your office, press releases of what these tests really test and what we really are doing to show some comparative data would be helpful. And you and I know we can, figures don't lie, some liars figure, and some of the figures that are used against us are lies, in my opinion. I will, as she's writing that down with some nerves again.
Do we have, do we ever access, thinking of what you're referring to, and this would be more my fault, but it would be sort of what he's talking about, the EDWII data, the information about where we rank it. Because we're really actually doing, you know, not, it's not great, but it's not bad either, in terms of, if you look at what EDWII presents on each state, it actually is a better tool to see an overall picture of what we're doing in Alabama. And rather than using NAEP, which is of course the source, and that's before they, you know, great, we already discussed that, how it's a random selection.
I wouldn't even venture to suggest.
But, but I think, I mean, the, the fact is that the fifty-second comes from NAEP versus looking at other sources, which we've done in the past. And, you know, that might, I don't know how that connects with, with Power School, but I think we have the similar, have access to similar data information, whatever you call it.
I definitely think that the, all of the assessment data that we're pumping into analytics inside of Power School, we can take and cross-reference that with any of that EDWII data, and we can get with communications and.
That's a good model. We've used it in the past to, to talk about where we've been and what we've accomplished, especially when we were doing really well with reading. So.
Well, thank you. That'd be good help.
One last thing. ACT, and Dr. Mackey, we've talked about this before. All of our juniors take the ACT. Many of our students take it after that point, again, on their own. I've understood in the past, we were not allowed to accept those scores. And so into our model of how our students have scored on the ACT, we could only take the junior level test, even if they took it five times when they were a senior and did much better. That's not a true reflection of how they did, of their achievement. And we're trying to measure achievement. Is there a way Power School can access those higher ACT scores post junior year? Or it could be their junior year, but they just take it outside the school independently. And some school systems pay for it.
Yes.
A second time, somehow.
Let me say, let me try to answer now, let her answer about Powers, how Power School could do that, what we could do in Power School. So the, the issue is whether they take it outside the school. So we take, we pay for the one administration. As you know, this year, we asked legislature for money to pay for a second administration. We didn't get it. I assume we'll ask for it again this coming year. We'll keep pushing. Usually takes some time to do that. But because we pay for the administration, and it happens on our campus, we get the student score. If they go take the test at AUEM, Alabama State here, the student owns that data. And the student has to determine where the data are sent. So for instance, they might send it to Jacksonville State, University of Alabama, but not send it to Auburn, because they don't want to. So the student owns the data.
Doesn't the counselor know?
No.
So the counselor, well, they're sending in their transcripts.
That's proprietary data, that is owned by the person that pays for the test.
Right. And so they would have to, each student would have to choose to share the data. And that's why we can't use it for accountability data, because it's not our data that own. It belongs to the student or the family. Whoever paid, they pay for the test, they choose to whom to release their information. And that's why we cannot use it for accountability. For accountability, it has to be one of our tests that we control that's given on our campuses. Now, they can, schools can offer to do a private internal, and they know this, I mean, we've talked to them about it, I don't say everybody knows, but we keep pushing it out. They can do a private internal administration. So I'm, you know, I have the, the, you know, I don't know, the Coffee Cup High School, and that's my high school. And I, and I can offer another administration at my school that students, that we use, the, you know, students that qualify for free reduced lunch can get a voucher. And they can use the voucher, or I can, they can pay for it. And then if it's a, but I only allow the students at my school to take the test, and I do the contract with ACT, then I can get those data. That's different. And we do have some schools, that's fairly a new thing, but we have some schools now exploring doing that. We have a school that was looking at, I don't know for sure if they followed through, using School Bus to go around and pick up kids on Saturday morning to do a Saturday morning administration of only their students. But they have to be, they, yeah, they have to, they can, to do that, they have to do an agreement with ACT, and it is only their students. They can't take students outside.
Accountability.
They cannot, no, that was my next thing. But they still cannot use that for accountability, because the accountability one. But they still cannot use that for accountability because the accountability one has to be owned by the state of Alabama. So we can't, that's our, our problem. And it is frustrating. It's frustrating to principals because I've got a student that say, you know, the cutoff is 24 for CCR and they score 23, they go take it in December on a college campus and they get the 24, but that 24 doesn't count back for accountability purposes. Now, we've met with ACT and Ms. Martin might can even more, Opal Moore and Maggie could, she's not down here with us, but we've met with them multiple times trying to work through this. We're not the only state. The other states that use ACT for accountability that are trying to work through this too. Ideally, what would be good is if students could at least self-report back, I got a better score. And count that. And that's what we've kind of helped ask for and Shantia may have, she's got more information. Yes, ma'am?
So here's the situation federally, we still couldn't, wouldn't be able to count accountability. They outlined that back because there were several questions and they didn't even get it in a Q and A. Several questions of various states to see like if they could have counted highest score, even if the state owned it, even if we provided it and we owned it, you had to choose which administration you were going to use to count your accountability students. But as relates to the students, of course, they're benefiting every time they take the test. So just want to even know that regardless of if you chose and owned the actual results, you would have to choose which administration you're going to use for all.
So even if we did a second administration, we had to choose which administration's going to be.
One time in high school. You want to share that, Shantia with Essa, that you choose one grade span in high school.
And even if you took it, even if it was the same grade, you still would have to choose. Like say for an example, you did it in the fall, they would administer the test in the fall and then was administered again in the spring. You have to decide on which one of those you want to choose for accountability purposes. That would be all of the spring of the year, even if it was the same grade. It has to be a specific time period that you choose. And that's a federal regulation.
Because obviously some students have financial abilities or homeschool abilities or other abilities to multiple tests. And the data is based on a data point at a given time with a given description. And that's why it's an accountability data point. If you start burying that data point, then you, then you lose the validity of the accountability.
But if we offered it twice, we could choose the spring or the, the second administration to be our data point.
Could, but.
You would only do one.
Right, right, right. You could only do one, but you could.
But you have to choose before the data comes in. You can't say ahead of time.
Right, exactly.
But that's also dangerous. Talking to some high school principals and so, you know, the majority of students in the state don't go to a four-year school that requires an ACT score. And so that you, we're already fighting the, we're making you take the ACT. If we make you take it twice and the second one's the only one that counts, then you've got, you could actually have grade deflation because they're like, I already took that last fall. I'm not trying hard this spring. Now, your students who are trying to win a college scholarship, some of them are going to take it multiple times. They can't use the voucher to do it. I mean, there are ways to get those scores up for the benefit of the individual, but none of that benefits the school accountability.
I guess it's just that issue of.
Teachers don't, as you well know, teachers only likes to give up a certain amount of time testing. You take another timed test, you take another instructional day of it. It's a balance.
It's a balance, but I think with so many students, the research shows they do better the more times they take the ACT. And so it's just to the point of we are better than that NAEP score 52nd. We're not able to reflect those higher ACT scores.
Our ACT scores now show that we're better than the NAEP. You don't have to get it again. Our ACT scores already show that we're better than the NAEP scores already. And you listen to ratings of the top schools in the nation, we're better. There are a lot of other measures, that's why I refer to them, that they, she's better aware for producing than, than I can tell you about. There are a lot of other measures that show we're a lot better than show, including the ACT score already as it currently exists. You don't have to worry about inflating it, it already is there. And sometimes in Carol's granddaughter, on the first administration made a score, it was good, but her parents saw reasons to have her take it again and she did a lot better. So that happens. But you can't count the separate score because Bob Jones would like to have counted the second score, but they can't.
And for account, for Power School, the one thing, we get back to Stacy. But the real power, keep using the word power of Power School, of the analytics piece is that we're, we're building a system where, they are building a system, we're building it, but at each local school where they should be able to go through and a good instructional person, they build those standards in and they look at those, not the ACT, but they look at the early high school ACT, they can look at the formative data. And before the child takes the ACT in that fall of their junior year, they should have a pretty good plan of what the deficits are going in. So you're not using the ACT as an autopsy. You're using the ACT as a capstone test and you've built toward it. And I think that, back to your original question, what can Power School do to help? That's it. The power is there to load all of these data about a child so you know, so, you know, so and so's not going to probably do well on the fractional reasoning part of the ACT because they're showing fractional reasoning problems all the way through. So what do we do for them as a sophomore? And in that, even the summer program and all that, how do we help parents know this is what your child needs to be ready for the ACT? So I'm defer back, Stacy can say it better than I, but there, there is power in how we prepare kids for the assessments.
Yeah, I think more of the swap is the mentality on us than it is the program doing it because the technology is there. We just got to get the data in there for it to make those runs for us, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Are you doing some of those 30 seconds?
Somebody owes me a frosty.
Okay, we're now on number three. Resolution to modify certain passing scores as a precondition for initial certification and program admission.
Yes, so Denise is going to come up, Dr. Peacock. Now this is, so this is a Praxis discussion again, but these are the Praxis tests currently have, they're being retired, they're being replaced by other tests. And let Dr. Peacock talk about it.
Yes, and I know you guys remember these meetings about this time every year. So this is something that feels normal. This is a normal thing that we do. This year we only have two tests that are expiring. It's our middle school math test and our secondary math test. Those tests will no longer be available after the last day of August of this year. So September 1, as we do any other year, we have to make the switch to the new tests. Now with these two new tests, much like every test that we've done in the past, standard setting studies have occurred. These were actually done in 2021, both for the reading and, I mean, for the middle school and for the secondary. Alabama didn't have representatives on both of those panels. We had two representatives for the secondary math, there were 25 total. We had two and for the middle school, there were 29 total and we had two. So we were well represented on both. The resolution that you have shows the national score, cut score. That has been our, you know, protocol in the past is to adopt that cut score. So that's what we're, you know, assuming that we should go with this time as well. Those scores are here. If you guys approve that, it'll be just like it is every year. It'll just be updated in our assessment manual, updated on the website. And anyone that tests or is initially admitted after September, September 1 and thereafter would move to this new test. And again, the old test will be gone, so it's not a question of if, it's a, it's a question of when and the when has to be by September 1. So again, it's a normal thing we're doing, which is a good thing. So I'm happy to answer questions on that and, you know, anything that you guys want to ask.
Just the point because the, the middle school mathematics recommend that she goes from 69, 65 to 57 because the national average changes. It's not because we're reducing our proficiency level.
Well, when they do those standard setting studies and I definitely.
The standard studies change that number, not us.
Right, right. And it's a completely different test.
I understand, but that is not our changing or reducing it.
You are correct.
The data collection agency modified their score. There's comparability, right?
When they go, it's really, one doesn't have anything to do with the other. When they do the standard setting studies, they're just looking at that specific test.
I think we're saying the same thing.
Right, and they're looking at the, at the various areas of that. So the one score, you know, we see that all the time. It'll be a point higher or a point lower. But it's really a completely different test.
The eight-point difference will draw attention to it, but it's because of the analysis of a different test.
Right, that's exactly right.
And this was the national standards.
Yes, and that is what we normally do. You know, foundations of reading when we talked, I guess it was last month, all the months already to go ahead. That was an Alabama specific test, standard setting study because of the fact we were adopting that Massachusetts test. But the protocol with Praxis, they do these national standard setting studies. We're always invited to them, I send them out. We always have lots and lots of people that apply that want to be part of that here in Alabama. So we always have great representation, even on some of the odd tests that you wouldn't think about, Japanese and Korean and some of those areas. We still have people that are willing and excited to serve on those committees. And we want them to because we want Alabama to be represented with that. But this is the same type of protocol that we've used in the past with all of the other Praxis tests. Thank you. Anyone else?
Someone?
All right. Thank you. You're very welcome.
All right.
So we jump to 11. This is textbook committee, this was, this should be pretty easy. So this is the textbook committee for the course of study you just recently approved. It's, no, it's a career tech, it's architecture, architecture and construction, IT, transportation, distribution and logistics. We still have one opening there and we have openings for institutions of higher ed. They're going to try to have those filled before you come in next month. These are really hard to fill because those are very specific areas. So Ms. McCray, we, nobody, none, none of your superintendents have nominated anybody yet from that area, but again, a lot of schools don't have those three programs. So the, our CTE folks, Dr. Johns are reaching out and they feel like they'll, they'll have somebody before June to fill in where you see TBD there. If you know somebody teaches one of those courses who might be interested, let us know. But again, those are, you know, it's not like doing English Language Arts where we have thousands of people to choose from. These are very specific and they're much more difficult to, to fill. But you'll have that to come next month and then they'll do, again, it's a pretty concise study since they're only looking at textbooks in those areas. The next one is resolution for, yes, I'm sorry, Andalusia High School, this is District 1. So they're actually having a little ceremony tomorrow morning. I think they're having their end of the year awards ceremony in the morning. They won a national award for college, college application campaign. ACT sponsors for us. And they choose one high school in each of the states. There are only 17, I think, states that participate, but, and I don't want to, I think they're the states that require ACT for, you know, retire every student to take it, but they're only set in a limited number of states. One high school in each state every year gets this award for really pushing high, college admissions, college application and admissions. And you have to have a pretty strong plan to do it. And this year's winner from Alabama is Andalusia High School. So they announced that, we sent something out and you might be thinking, didn't we do this already? We sent you out a press release a few weeks ago, but we're just doing, this would be a resolution of the board to recognize them that we passed in June. Ceremonial is tomorrow down at Andalusia High School. And we have some folks who are going to be there. And then 14 is our spotlight schools on science of reading. We pretty much discussed that, so I don't, if there are other questions, you'll see the schools next month. I mean, yeah, I don't have to labor that. And the last one is an update. Dr. Payne's here if you need to answer questions, but if you'll look, this is the one, you passed a rule, an emergency rule, we're on you right now, for changes in school construction. The legislature made changes. It was a $500,000 limit. You see now that where it's 750,000. So they came back this year, before our rule even went into effect, the emergency rule is in effect now. They came back and made a couple of other adjustments. So they went from 500,000 to 750,000. And they're also, that's the, the only thing that really affects us. They did make another change to the legislation that, not in our code, but the, that even if a project's under $750,000, the districts will still have to submit the health and safety or what do they call it, life safety code to DCM. So those would be things like electrical, fire exits, fire alarms, those kind of things. So they, if it's under 750,000, they don't have to do a full project review of all the architectural drawings, but they do have to do a limited review for the life safety stuff. That's, that's in the law, that's a DCM thing. But we, you know, for us, the change is we, the legislature upped it from 500,000 to 750,000. So that's why you would have voted today to make it a permanent rule change at 500, but knowing the law had already changed, we pulled that off and we have this. It'll have to go on the table for another 45 days. And then you can make it official, I guess, in August. It becomes law in October, October 1, so we'll still be on the timeline.
So we're not going to do a temporary change.
Yes, sir. We don't need to because actually they, this law doesn't go into effect till October 1. The other one's in effect now and you, you passed over an emergency rule two months ago that is in effect until October 1. So we're covered.
Anything else? That's it? All right, thank you all.
Make sure you get one of these for your ladies.
Oh, tell us what you do. Oh, portal report.
Can I just pass it out?
Yes. Okay. But we are, Jaren, thank you so much for your attention and time.
Always.
Thank you so much.